Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I want to particularly welcome those joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and those that are here in person on this balmy February day. If you look at the order of business today, when you walked in, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. We encourage you to grab one of those and follow along with us as we go. If you're interested in any of the supporting documents that we get to review as we're making decisions on each of these items, you can always access that at sedgwickcounty.org. We encourage you to do so. So it should be a pretty streamlined meeting today. Few people that are here. We've got a lot of appointments that are happening, including some appointments with the boards that the commissioners sit on. So let's get this meeting started and move it forward. So officially, Clerk, call the meeting to order for Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Also, I should note that Manager Tom Stoltz is out this morning, pre-arranged. We have Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman sitting in the front seat, so good to see you, sir. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Today, we have Julie Simpson here from Emergency Management. She's here to tell you about the next upcoming snowstorm. Hat, just kidding. She's actually here to talk about severe weather safety classes. Julie?
Thanks, Nicole.
I couldn't help it.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, like Nicole said, Julie Simpson, your Emergency Management Director. It does feel very ill-timed to be talking about severe storms and tornadoes when we are dealing with our very cold, but this is the time of year when these cold fronts will start mixing in with the Gulf moisture and creating those nasty thunderstorms. So we are just right around the corner for severe weather, and we have our severe schedule of our severe storm safety classes coming up. Our first one is actually next Monday, February 24th, at Valley Center. Well, there'll be 15 of these storm safety classes. They are open to the public. We partner with the National Weather Service every year for these presentations. They are hosting the big event, the Storm Fury on the Plains, Monday, March 24th, at Wichita Northwest High School Auditorium. Again, all of these are open to the public. We highly encourage folks to attend. But this is the time of year as we're hunkered down in our homes, staying warm, is to take a look at our insurance policies, make sure they're up to date, make sure you understand what is covered and not covered, understanding the deductibles for my renters out there. We absolutely highly encourage you to get renters insurance. As we have seen in previous disasters, the homeowners or the property owners, their insurance will cover the dwellings but not personal belongings. So we highly encourage folks to get renters insurance. But now also is the time to look at those emergency kits. They've been sitting for a few months in your shelters. Now is the time to go through, looking at your food and water, kind of refresh some of those things. If you don't have a kit, now is the time to put some of those emergency supplies together in preparation for this spring. Hope to see you at one of these storm safety classes, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Julie, great. Appreciate all the work. That's a lot of classes.
Fifteen this year.
Yeah, a lot of work that gets put in to organize these things, and we really appreciate those efforts. Commissioners, any questions for Julie?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, as always.
All right. Wanted to share some quick reminders. We have two applications closing this week. First one is for Excellence in Public Service. Nominations are due this Friday, February 21st. The Excellence in Public Service Award recognizes employees from Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and Wichita Public Schools who exhibit the highest standard of service. It is also the last call for middle and high school students to showcase their patriotic creativity by designing the next "I Voted" sticker for Sedgwick County. They are due to the election office on Friday, February 28th. Thousands of voters will wear their winning artwork during the 2025 elections. February is Black History Month, and we'd like to take a moment to honor African Americans throughout U.S. history. This short video highlights county staff and takes the opportunity to introduce the Unity Collective.
I'm incredibly proud of the resilience and determination of my ancestors. Black history is not just about the past, it's also about understanding the present and building a more equitable future.
Reflecting on the people that came before us, what their goals were, what they were trying to accomplish, and then your contribution to that now. If you don't feel like you're really contributing in the way that you should be, then change it.
It inspires me to be my best self for the next generation and for people that are looking at me.
Just treating everybody with dignity, respect, and love.
There's 14 of us total. We're all Sedgwick County employees, really varying for departments and tenures, and we tried to get as much perspective as possible on the board. Our goal is pretty simple, to create unity within our organization.
Everybody's entitled to their opinions, everybody's entitled to their thoughts, but to be able to sit down and talk about it and engage face-to-face with anybody is key.
It's important, if you work here, that you feel heard and you feel seen as part of your identity, but also, we represent a community of more than half a million people. Seeing our entire community within our organization gives us an avenue to provide better government service.
I see us as a resource for Sedgwick County.
We're putting out some information on resources for Black History Month. We put out some videos on black artists and black musicians and black history.
I think that's how we become more unified as a people, is to share the different stories from different cultures and how we connect with one another.
As a society, as a country, we've come a long way from where we used to be. So I just hope that we continue to stay on that path and continue to unite as a whole.
And that's all I have for today. I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, great video. Thank you for all that participated in that video. Commissioners, any questions? This Unity Collective group, I know Corey and Zoe are here. I'm very pleased to see how this board has transformed and is going to continue to meet and continue conversations with the heart of really making sure that Sedgwick County employees have a voice, and you're hearing feedback. So really, really compelling board, really interested to see how this thing develops, and appreciate you guys stepping up and leading in that front. Thank you so much. Okay, Nicole, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, had no one sign up today for Public Agenda? Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, On-Bunk Meeting Minutes of January 29th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, it looks like we can take Items A and B together because all Commissioners were present. So do we have any questions, concerns, any changes you want to make to Meeting Minutes, Items A and B? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the On-Bunk Meeting Minutes of January 29th and the Regular Meeting Minutes of February 5th, 2025. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, Resolution Appointing Joe Mosher to the Sedgwick County Waco Township Trustee Position.
Okay, Mr. Justin Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Item C involves a resolution appointing Joe Mosher to the Waco Township Trustee Position. There's currently a vacancy, and under state law, the Board of County Commissioners is tasked with filling that vacancy. This township is in Commissioner Bluebaugh's district, and he has made the recommendation. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. Apparently, Joe has been a trustee for several years in the past, and I guess he didn't file in time, so the other candidate that was the right-in-selected candidate chose not to accept the office, so we'll go back to Joe, and he's gladly accepting, and I'm glad to see him taken back over.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to go ahead and take the recommended action.
Okay, so recommended action to approve. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye, and Kelly Arnold is here. Would you like to?
Swear.
Yeah, there you go.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, raise your hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Waco Township Trustees, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Joe, did I say anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you's good enough, yeah. Very good. Appreciate. These township trustees are really important in what they do, so thank you so much for being willing to serve. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, Resolution Reappointing Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This appointment would reappoint Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities, as recommended for reappointment by Commissioner Howell. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I love Jerry Myers, she's an amazing individual. She's no longer the leader of the Mulvane Senior Center any longer, so she's got, she doesn't have that responsibility any longer, but she is a very caring person on this topic, and so I'm very pleased to have her reappointed to this, this board, I think is very important for her and the people that she works with. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation, we would go ahead and appoint, reappoint Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, and Jerry's not here, so the Clerk's office will be reaching out to have Jerry come in and fill out all the paperwork. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Resolution Reappointing Peggy O'Donnell to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. If it's okay with you, I propose to take up Items E and F together, as they involve the same advisory board. This would be, as Madam Clerk read, a resolution to reappoint Peggy O'Donnell, as recommended by Commissioner Meitzner, and then to the same board, it would be a resolution to reappoint Carolyn Walters, as recommended by Commissioner Howell. Recommended action would be to adopt those two resolutions.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to extend my appreciation for Peggy O'Donnell to continue serving on this important board, so I will make a recommendation to approve the reappointment of both Peggy O'Donnell and Carolyn Walters.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to agree with the comments of the previous speaker. I would second the motion to appoint both Peggy O'Donnell and Carolyn Walters to these boards.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Items E and F. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Once again, thank you so much to these two individuals for serving. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, Resolution Appointing Ray Mann to the Sedgwick County First District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This item would appoint Ray Mann to Commissioner Meitzner's First District Citizens Advisory Board. I will point out that Mr. Mann is the Chief Deputy County Treasurer. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad we had a opening for this position. Vacancy popped up, and we had a handful of applicants, all very qualified, and so I'm appreciative of the district and of the interest of the citizens to be on this Citizens Advisory Board, but after review, I determined, we determined, that Ray Mann would be good for this, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint Ray Mann to the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Mr. Kelly Arnold.
All right, Mr. Mann, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God. I do. I do. Congratulations. Say anything if you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity and looking forward to serving the county in another capacity. So thank you very much, Mr. Myers.
You may. Thanks, Ray. Yeah, very good, Ray, and I'm sure your experience is going to be really, really key to have on that type of board. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Resolution Reappointing Michael Mitchell to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Justin.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This item would be a resolution reappointing Michael Mitchell to Commissioner Wise's Third District Citizens Advisory Board. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Wise.
Yes, I had the opportunity to serve with Mr. Mitchell on the cab prior to my election and happy to have him on board to serve again, so I recommend, or I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Mr. Kelly Arnold.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God. I do. Congratulations. If you'd like to say anything, you can. Okay. One second.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Resolutions Appointing Commissioners to Various Boards/Committees.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As comes up frequently with the board, there are certain positions that the board as a whole can make nominations and/or appointments to certain advisory boards. There's three of those that are on this agenda item. They've all been recommended by Chairman Beatty, the first of which is the Chief Elected Officials Board. The recommended action on that item is to appoint Commissioner Bluebaugh to serve the remainder of the term, the unexpired term that Chairman Beatty is currently serving, which would expire on June 30th, 2027. The second resolution is the Lake Afton Public Observatory Board, and the recommended action here is to appoint Commissioner Wise to that board. And then the third item is for WOMP, or WAMPO, Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that would be to appoint Commissioner Wise in that position. The recommended action is to adopt the three resolutions. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. These are, as many of you know, that the Commissioners serve on a variety of boards, advisory boards, as Mr. Wagner had indicated. You know, our role in these boards is pretty unique, and in some regards, we're at the table to make sure we're understanding how these specific organizations are influencing our community and to have a voice at that table. In some regards, these are boards that the county either has an interest of some sort, maybe an investment of some sort, or actually own property, or there's a variety of reasons why the county has an interested stake, and the Commissioner is on that board also as oversight of our investment, to see and ensure that the investment is being steward over wisely. So, and we all serve on a variety of boards. We're just talking about three in this motion today, but the other part of this is we dialogue about, hey, where's our skill set best served and where's our interests? All of us serve on boards that maybe there's a specific interest that we have in that board and the work they do, or because of our skill set and what we bring to the table to benefit that board, but there's a lot of work being done in these boards, and we're all a part of several of them, so I'm honored to make these appointments and think they'll be great fits for these boards moving forward. So, that being said, I'll move to adopt the resolution, and Item I. Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item J, ZON 2024-00059, Zone Change Request in the County from SF-20, Single Family Residential District, to GC, General Commercial, to Permit Warehouse Self-Storage with Protective Overlay, number 446, generally located on the northeast corner of West 53rd Street North and North Geo Avenue, 3416 West 53rd Street North.
Very good, Clerk. Very, very good. Okay, Scott Wadele, welcome.
Good morning. Yes, Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. So for this case today, the applicant is requesting to rezone a property from SF-20, Single Family, to GC, General Commercial, with a protective overlay, and this site may look familiar to you because we had a case right next to it just a few months ago. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the zoning change in order to allow for the site to be used for self-storage. In terms of the property, the site is located to the north and west of 53rd Street Meridian. The specific address is 3416 West 53rd Street North, and you can see it here outlined in that black outline with the arrow. The subject site is just under an acre in size. It's zoned SF-20. It's currently developed with a vacant former motel, which you can see here in the aerial, and it consists of one ownership parcel. In terms of context, property to the north and east is one property, and is zoned SF-20 and is developed with a vacant commercial building. Property to the west, across Gau Avenue, is zoned SF-20 and is in use for agricultural uses. Property to the south, across West 53rd Street, is zoned Office Warehouse and is currently in agricultural use. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about development standards, requirements for warehouse self-storage in the Unified Zoning Code, and the applicant-proposed protective overlay. The staff report also includes a review of the requested zone change for conformance with official plans and policies. The requested zone change, staff found, is in partial conformance with a comprehensive plan, which is titled "The Community Investments Plan." That plan includes a 2035 Future Growth Concept Map. The map identifies this area to be appropriate for new residential uses. However, it's important to note that the new residential use category definition does allow for pockets of commercial and other uses due to market forces and proximity to other things like highways or other uses. The proposed PO, which, protective overlay, which was proposed by the applicant, is designed to mitigate potential negative impacts to surrounding properties. Zoning classification of GC, which is what they're requesting, is pretty intensive and typically reserved for higher-intensity commercial corridors, and so they're proposing the protective overlay in order to reduce what those impacts could be, to limit, and also to limit the uses that the property could be put towards. In addition, as a review of the comprehensive plan, the proposed rezoning, staff determined was not in conformance with the land use compatibility guidelines that are in that plan. One of the guidelines states that higher-intensity development should be discouraged from locating in areas of existing lower-intensity development, particularly in established low-density residential areas. In addition, under the heading "Development Pattern," one of the guidelines states that low-density residential uses should be buffered from commercial and industrial areas by open space, water bodies, changes in geography, or major barriers such as arterial streets or highways. So none of those are present, and so that's why we found that it was not in conformance with that. In terms of review, January 9th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this case and recommended denial. The vote was seven to five. Now, no members of the public spoke in response at that public hearing. I would point out, though, that just prior to taking the action to recommend denial, the Planning Commission did entertain a motion to approve it with protective overlay, as recommended by the applicant, and that vote was six to six, and that was the reason why that was not successful. So as you can tell, this was a difficult case for the Planning Commission because of those close votes. The Citizens Advisory Board did not hear this item, and they elected not to hear it, and no protests were received against this case. In terms of recommendation, it is recommended that you adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and deny the zone change request. That would take a simple majority of three of five votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the Planning Commission, make alternative findings, and approve the application with or without the protective overlay. That would require two-thirds vote, or four out of five. As always, you can always return the case back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration with a statement specifying why you're returning it and the reason for the failure to approve or deny. That would require just a simple majority of three of five votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. Here's the zoning map, which was described earlier. This one's a little bit unique in that the Wichita city limits are the dash-blue line that you see there on Sheridan, and just to the east of that is LC, Limited Commercial Zoning, which is in fact developed for residential uses, and you'll see that in the aerial. So here's the aerial showing those uses around there. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that new residential is recommended in this area. Here is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing the urban influence and growth areas. So for this one, it's in the city of Wichita's urban growth area. The next map, then, is from, represents what's in the zoning code, and this is the urban areas of influence, and this is not located in an urban area of influence because it's in Wichita's urban growth area and Wichita shares, of course, the joint planning commission with Sedgwick County. Here's the notification and protest map, and again, no protests were submitted against this application. Here are photos from the site and from the surrounding properties. Okay, well, I'll look to the applicant to clarify this, but from the photos, it looks like the site has been cleared, so I mentioned that there was a vacant former motel on the site, but I'll look to the applicant to clarify that one. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, before we hear from the applicant, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Scott?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
Why don't we pause for a second, Scott? And have we had any ex parte communication? We'll give Commissioners an opportunity to declare. We'll just go in order. Commissioner Bluebaugh, any ex parte communication on this case?
No, Chairman.
I've had no ex parte communication as well.
Yeah, I've also not had any ex parte communication. I remain open to the facts and findings in the hearing.
I have not as well.
I agree with what they said. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Scott? Okay, why don't we give an opportunity for the applicant?
Thank you, esteemed Chairman and Commissioners, as well as thank you to Mr. Wadele for that introduction and description of our case. Let me go back to this really quick. Just a quick response to what Mr. Wadele stated about clarification. First of all, I'm Jay Cook with Baughman Company, 315 South Ellis, for the record. Sorry about that. My client has, they did raise the old hotel to the ground. It is cleared off-site now, looking to develop and wanting to do self-storage. So this case has some unique qualities, as it's made its sojourn before the Commission here today, and I want to talk about those qualities with you and see if I can persuade you to see this from my point of view. The preeminent unique quality to this case is that 90 feet to the south, if you're looking at this zoning map in green, is zoned Office Warehouse. Right now, it is vacant, as Mr. Wadele stated, but the use for that falls under a protective overlay to allow warehouse self-storage. We're asking for the exact same use that is permitted 90 feet to the south, and that's gone through the same zone change and protective overlay process. In fact, the protective overlay that I drafted for this case, I don't believe there's copyright In fact, the protective overlay that I drafted for this case, I don't believe there's copyright laws on those. I did take some of the language from that to make sure that it was similar, and I made our protective overlay even more restrictive than it needed to be in requiring landscaping to meet the city of Wichita's landscaping, as Sedgwick County does not have a landscape code. I realize that Planning Department personnel revolves, as does the Planning Commission, but the institution as a whole saw that the property to the south generally met the qualities needed and met the golden factors that you have been given as storage, or self-storage, warehouse self-storage is a reasonable use for that property. So therefore, this same Planning Department and Planning Commission saw that was a reasonable use, and unfortunately for that, precedent has already been set, and now we're stating that one property owner does not have the same rights as the other. And as you can see, we're surrounded by the exact same zoning, exact same low-intensity residential zoning. Not only that, but the moorings down here to the south are almost million-dollar homes, and 20 of them looking up north at what will be self-storage warehouse right here in this green, green area. So as I stated, golden factors, they don't change. They're what you make your decision on, and they are subjective. And I understand that they are subjective. If they weren't subjective, I wouldn't be here arguing for my client. It would be very black and white, and we wouldn't have this case before you. And that's what makes this particular case unique in another aspect. From this side of the podium, I get clients who have done this, they've gone through this a lot, they know what they're wanting to rezone. It's a slam dunk case, no big deal. I get clients that maybe they were given, Mr. J.R. Cox's office sent them a zoning, you're doing something not allowed in your zoning, and they come to us and say, can we do it? And it's outlandish and probably not a good idea, and you get to hear those cases, sit here and argue for some of those that had questionable use requests. However, this client did his homework. He was ignorant of the process, but did his homework, went to the Planning Department and asked, what can I do to allow the use I want on this property? He spoke with the division manager of the current Plans Division and was told what to apply for, was told how to do it, that a protective overlay would be a good idea to limit the use, not for all the commercial uses that would be allowed in GC, but at least for the warehouse self-storage. So he did his homework. He asked the Planning Department, and one member of the Planning Department cannot unilaterally make decisions, but they can definitely make recommendations and say, I think we could be okay with this. But not only that, the senior planner that was assigned the case initially recommended approval based off of the same golden factors that ultimately were decided by, I guess, a committee that looks at these staff reports as being not in favor of the use that I'm asking for. So due to those subjective nature of the golden factors, I'd like to go over Golden Factor III and V, which is in your staff report as the reason for the recommendation of denial. Number three, the golden rules that you can find on the Planning's website that I like to go to, extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties. We care a lot about nearby properties. I care about them a lot because I want to make sure everybody's protected in this, and that's the job of the Planning Department to weigh that. In this document on the Planning Department's website, can the uses allowed in the requested district be good neighbors to existing development? I believe we can, and the fact that in this protective overlay, we've stated not only that there will be screening on the west, north, and east side, but there will also be a landscape buffer that requires shade trees, evergreen trees, things that will enhance the view of this property. Bear in mind that for, I don't know exactly how long, 40 to 50 years, these neighbors in this particular square have had to look at a dilapidated hotel and an empty gentleman's club for a long time. And that giving at least some type of infill development will actually improve the quality of that piece of property and what I believe will improve the quality of their general neighborhood. So that's, can we be good neighbors? I believe a self-storage may have some negative connotations to it, but when you place the protective overlay that we have on top of that to say, hey, not only are we going to be good neighbors, but we're going to go above and beyond what's required in the county to make sure that this looks pretty as a storage unit. I believe that Golden Factor number three actually is more in our favor with the protective overlay. Had I come to you asking for general commercial with nothing, just, hey, let me do whatever I want right here as far as what's allowed in general commercial, you should say no. But the fact that we're coming with an exact use, which is self-storage, and not only that, but a protective overlay as a protection for the neighbors, I believe that actually number three is more in our favor. Now, Golden Factor number five in your analysis as to why staff recommended denial, that's the relative gain to public health, safety, and welfare as compared to the loss in value or the hardship imposed to the applicant. To be honest, the applicant, obviously, there are other ways that this property could be developed, nobody's saying there's not, but we believe that with North Gate, which is all of this development that Scott mentioned, is residential development, you've got to the east of that, you have Walmart, you're going to have restaurants. This is a good place for a self-storage, warehouse self-storage. There's a lot of market-driven research done to say, hey, can we put this? I did not mean to do what I just did. I don't know that that matters, but let me fix that. A good area for self-storage is an area that's surrounded by homes, and that's one of the reasons why my client thinks, hey, I can make this property something that is not only useful to me, but is also useful to the neighborhood, as North Gate, I believe right now, maybe a third has been developed, as it continues to be developed and goes north, I believe it would actually be a good use for the neighbors. I want to reiterate that we don't make decisions on zoning matters based on precedent, and I understand that, but having the property to the south be allowed to use and to do the exact thing we're offering, it made this particular case bite a little different for me as a planner and also for my client, who thought, you know, if I'm doing what they're doing, what's the harm? I understand that GC zoning, as Scott said, is not really recommended in this. So what I'm going to ask of you today is to take my findings of number three and five that were used and obviously recommend overriding the Planning Commission. As Scott stated, I had a vote for approval, and on January 9th was the day we got about three inches of snow in that three-hour meeting, so I had a couple Commissioners leave. I don't know how that would have changed anything, not saying that it would have. So what I'm requesting is that you override the Planning Commission's recommendation based off of my two findings there that were used for the denial, and approve this request with the protective overlay. If it's tough to swallow that as a whole, I would ask that you return it to the Planning Commission. Maybe let us look at office warehouse zoning, this green zoning here that is the same as what's over there, and talk about how we can make it seem, or make it, you know, more like that. And that's all I really have. I'd like to stand for questions if you have any.
Okay. Mr. Cook, thank you for that. Commissioners, before we open up for a public comment on this zoning case, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none at this time, hang tight. What we're going to, what we'll do, now, you can grab a seat, just stay close, and what we'll do officially at this point in time is open up a public hearing for anyone that would like to come and comment on this specific zoning case. What we can do is just give your name and address, give you five minutes if you'd like to provide comment on this specific zoning case. So we're open for public hearing. Would anybody like to comment? Okay. Second go at it. Would anyone like to comment on Item J, this specific zoning case? Okay, seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench for questions and comments. Scott, I do have a couple questions, and I appreciate this. And anytime we go from a single-family to GC, I mean, this is a big lift, so I do appreciate the protective overlay and the attempt at the protective overlay. We did entertain a case here recently, you had mentioned it, I believe it was Next Door. Can you give, remind me, what were we trying to do there? It was going from single-family to, was it GC as well? And what were the findings that we had?
Yes, sir. So for that one, it was going from SO20 to GC, and the purpose was, is that the property owner wanted to use it for vehicle storage. So what happened with this one, and I think it also demonstrates, well, anyway, I'll tell you, the vote at the Planning Commission was to recommend denial of that one, and the vote was 10 to 2. So not nearly as close as the vote for this one. In terms of the findings on that one, it was factor number three, so permitting it, the thought was that by permitting vehicle storage yard in close proximity to residential development, that it would adversely impact the surrounding residential uses and introduce commercial uses into a primarily residential area. Also was listed was factor number five, that it could have possible negative impacts to public welfare, given that, because it was going to be for vehicle storage. So there were also two members of the public who spoke on that case. There was no one who spoke on the one that you're considering today. But there were two members who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. One was in favor and one was opposed to it.
Okay. That's helpful to understand, I remember as a reminder of what we went through in that. Now, there's a development to the east, there's a development planned, there is development on the west side of the river there. Now, to the south there, the area that's zoned, single-family, do you know, has that been platted yet? Do we know that for?
No, evidently not, because if it had been, if it'd been all the way through the plating process, it would show the different lots.
Okay, so as referenced by the applicant agent, the area to the green there that is already zoned, when did that zoning happen?
Ooh, I am not, okay, so we have an answer, 2005.
Okay, so this is not a current consideration as to what is happening in the area, because the addition to the east was not built in 2005, that's recent. Help me understand, because all of this is residential and high-end residential that's coming into this area. Help me understand conformance to the Comprehensive Plan. One of the things that we look like to see is a buffer between residential and general commercial. Now, I know the Walmart's there on the corner to the east, but there's a buffer to this housing addition there to the east of what we're discussing today, and that buffer is a pond, a big pond. So talk to me a little bit about a buffer and the Plan's requirement to have a buffer anytime we do anything with general commercial and residential coming up.
Sure, sure. So the Comprehensive Plan is a guide, and we're very fortunate in that it has a map that shows where different types of land uses should be. It also has kind of principles or guidelines that we look to when we're making a recommendation on a case. And so those are the things that we've pointed out in the staff report that we were looking at. I think the agent has been very eloquent about, there's an existing use, it's in this area, this is very similar, but when we looked at the comp plan, the way we interpreted it was that it does recommend having that buffer. In this instance, this is one of the parcels in what is evidently a residential subdivision, and so at that point, we felt like, yeah, it probably was not a good fit and did not comply with the Comprehensive Plan because of that. Again, I think the vote at the Planning Commission shows just what a difficult case this is to wrestle with.
Yeah, it is difficult, and when you're buying, anytime you're going SF20 or any residential zoning use over to GC, it is hard, and I think on my view, I want to advocate for property rights and the decisions made by this landowner, but those decisions also impact the property rights of those that are around them, and when people buy property with a use, a zoning use of single-family, they anticipate single-family activity happening in that area. And that's what makes the heartburn for the Planning Commission, it sound like, and that's some of the heartburn for me as well. I will not be in support of this. I'm going to, when it comes time for a motion, I'll make a motion for the staff recommendation to be approved, but I want to stand and listen to other questions and comments. So Commissioner Mice, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this one, I know when we were briefed as well, it is a little bit of a head-scratcher traditionally, and often, and Jay, thanks for the presentation and the summary, and the proposal is more defined than many that we get that are undefined. It's just a zoning change. So thanks for the clarification and the comparison to the across-the-street zoning. Usually on storage shed applicants over the years, we hear, you know, people say, oh, the traffic, the traffic, that's proved to be minimal, because people go to a storage shed once a month, maybe twice a year. So the traffic is not an issue. We usually hear, you know, maybe security or whatever on some businesses, but storage units are locked and secured, as far as even the gates and stuff. So I really struggle with why, I guess I understand the six to six kind of vote. Usually the Planning Commission is pro-business, and I respect the plating, looks like it's there, but there's really not major development going on as far as housing explosion. So I'm inclined to be supportive of this, or at least send it back if it was kind of tumultuous at the Planning Commission, go back and maybe get some clarification. It's just, is anything I said not consistent with our past considerations, especially related to storage units?
When it comes to traffic, no, I don't believe so. I think historically, I think storage units have been something that Wichita and Sedgwick County have kind of wrestled with over time, because, and the reason I say that is because in the zoning code, there are different requirements for self-storage units depending on what zoning districts they are in. And if they are in more, lower-intensity districts, there are a lot more requirements that go with them, and one of those include having a resident manager on-site. So it's only when you start to get to those more intensive zoning districts that you're able to get, to not have to do that requirement. So I think this is a tough one historically, warehouse self-storage has been a tough one for our community.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, your last comment said you're going to support the recommended action by the staff, which you said was to approve, but I think you meant to deny?
To deny, yes.
Okay. I got a few questions about process here. The minutes are pretty good, and by my calculation, it looks to me like we had 11 members at this hearing, although the vote totals indicate there's 12. The reason I'm asking, there are 14 members, 14 members of this board, and there's only 11 members listed. So first of all, that is a quorum, I assume.
Yes, sir.
That's a quorum.
It is, yes, sir.
And a quorum would be how many?
Eight people.
Eight people. How many does it take to approve an item? With there's 14 members on this board, how many does it take to approve an item?
Yeah, just a simple majority of eight.
Eight?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir, that's if you've got a full 14 members there. If you've got eight members, then it would take five in order to approve it, so a simple majority.
Okay. And that's in the bylaws?
Yes, sir, I believe so. I do not have a copy with me, but I can.
I think it matters. I'll just point out, I think the vote totals on this room are in error, because you say six to six on the motion to approve, I think it's actually six to five, I'm sorry, five to six, excuse me, to approve, and then six to five to deny. Why does that matter? Well, you had members missing this day.
Yes, sir.
And I think this is such a close vote. I don't know that I'm happy having this essentially decided by six people out of 14. I think that's not good, that's not the good way to handle this type of controversial issue. So just on the process alone, I would rather send this back potentially. I think we need to get a, have them take a look at this again. Second of all, there's very little information about why they're denying. I mean, looking at, just looking at page 38 in the backup material here, aerial view, and again, I understand some of the subject lot has been cleaned up since this picture was taken, but what about the stuff to the, either, around this lot? Is it still like it shows in that picture?
My understanding from that case is that that property owner has cleaned it up substantially.
The subject property?
Well, both properties. So you have the subject property, and then you have this kind of L- or seven-shaped property that kind of surrounds it. My understanding is that the subject site has been cleared, you'll see that from the photos, but then that the property immediately adjacent to it has been cleaned up, but again, doesn't look like it's been entirely cleaned up. So you can see the bus that's on this property, you can see a car that's there, you can see this truck and that trailer, but again, I believe that the resident who came in and spoke during that case indicated it had been cleaned up substantially from what it was earlier.
Also, the golden factors as represented by the applicant, what's on MAPC's website doesn't match what's in our book for some reason. I always bring this up, I don't know why we can't get them to align with each other. Please, let's make sure our, whatever's online aligns with our book, because... Please, let's make sure our, whatever's online aligns with our book, because it's frustrating to me to have to, to, you know, basically interpret that. But I believe one of the golden factors is, relates to the, find it here.
Commissioner Howell.
Go right ahead.
Samantha Seehan, Assistant County Counselor. My notes reflect that on that particular Planning Commission hearing, that there were 13 members present. There were 12 initially, and then Mr. Bill Johnson arrived about 10 minutes late. By the time this hearing and this vote took place, one, one member had left, and so there were 12 members voting at that time. So the six-to-six vote was accurate.
So the minutes are wrong? The minutes are incorrect?
In terms of?
It lists the names of the people who made a motion in second and in favor or opposed to each of the two motions. And I only see 11 names listed there?
Yeah. That's because there was one person who voted in favor of it both times.
Right, yes. No, it's correct.
Yeah, sir, I think what's happening with this is that it simply lists who moves, who seconds, and then also who is in opposition. It does not indicate the names of the people who are supportive of the motion. So I believe there's one person who, in this case, must have supported both motions, so their name would not be listed.
I'll accept that interpretation. I just, I assumed if they were opposed to the motion, they were on the other side. So again, maybe I'm reading too much into that, but it's a little odd to see that someone voted in to deny, then voted, sorry, voted to approve, then voted to deny. But okay.
Yes, sir.
Don't know who that was. Interesting, okay. I still don't know that I like six people having that much authority on a 14-member board. To me, it's just still, you know, I think that in the bylaws, if people are going to be missing, the question is, I understand the issue of quorum, but I don't know that I agree that should be less than 50% plus one of the members should be able to decide an issue for any issue that comes before that board. I made this, I made this statement in the past. That's how this board here is as well. We could do business with three commissioners. It takes three votes in the same direction to do any business here. So if you only have three members that show up, you can't just pass something on a vote of three to two, or, sorry, two to one, for example. And I've made my, my Citizens Advisory Board, was also set up that way. Again, the intent is that you have members assigned to the board, you need a majority of those members assigned to the board to do business, is the idea. So I hope it's in the minutes over there that it does clarify, just a simple majority of members present is what we're talking about. And I would love to see that reviewed by someone to make sure that's what it says. Back to my other question here, one of the golden factors here, how long has the applicant owned this property?
I believe it was fairly recent. I'll defer to the applicant's agent to answer that one.
Oh, that doesn't mean any good, I have that. Yeah, I have that. I have golden factors in here that are different than that, so. How long has the applicant owned the property?
Thank you for that question. I'm not 100% sure. I think they are, like Scott said, they are new to ownership, bought it when it was that dilapidated hotel, and then, so it's been recent.
Okay. The zoning to the, to the south of that, the OW zoning, when was that granted as OW?
Believe we, Jay indicated 2005.
Let me check. I've got the protective overlay for that, and it'll have the date on it. 2002, 2002 is when that was, that was done.
So they applied for a zone change and a protective overlay, and they never developed it, or?
The property to the south, yeah, yes.
It's undeveloped property, but it's set up to be some type of?
Yes, that is correct.
Self-storage. Okay. So again, I'm going to go back to staff here. So the reasons for a recommendation to deny is because of the residential properties to the, to the east of this subject site are still planned to be going, going in. But, and the comprehensive plan doesn't show this as warehouse, it shows it more as SF housing, correct?
Yes, it recommends it for residential, also because of the configuration of the area, which is platted essentially for residential use, and also because of the lack of separation between this property and the adjacent residential properties. Those are the reasons why we interpreted the request as not being in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
On your, on your protest map, that shows that no one protested, were there people who were living in homes there to the northeast of this subject site that were notified, and they had their chance to speak up and they?
Yes, sir, they did.
Did not have an interest?
That is correct. If you see here, the notification area, which is outlined in green, does include most of the properties of this subdivision to the north and to the west.
Do you know how many properties are currently constructed there in that, in that circle that are in that newer neighborhood?
I know it's much less than half of them. I would say probably somewhere in the ballpark between, I don't know, five to 10, I would say.
10 properties, potentially?
Potentially, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I'm having a hard time agreeing with staff on this one. I think the comprehensive plan, I don't know where storage units are supposed to go, but storage units, in my opinion, are ideally situated near neighborhoods where people need them. So maybe that's why people weren't opposed to this, because if anything, it may clean up the property that's there, may improve the look of that property, and they may naturally want that type of storage nearby. So considering there's also the same type of thing right across the street, I have a hard time saying it doesn't meet the neighborhood. The closest thing to the subject property is another warehouse, zoned property. That's the closest property. And the people to the, to the south of that, that newer neighborhood, that's the million-dollar homes, if they develop the one that's closest to them, this subject site can't even be seen from there. So I'm inclined to support the applicant on this one. I don't know that I agree that the comprehensive plan has all that much meat in this particular case, and I think that it was too close of a vote in MAPC. In fact, Mr. Chairman, I would be either inclined to support the applicant in this one, or I would make a motion to send it back, frankly, because I don't think that MAPC gave us enough data as to why they're opposing this. I mean, the only reason they came up with was there's some housing going to the east. I read the, I read the information here, and it says there's some housing going into the east, and staff made a recommendation for the same reason. So I don't know if I agree that that's reasonable, that's enough of a reason to deny someone their rights.
Hi, Sam.
Samantha Seehan, Assistant County Counselor. I just want to clarify that KSA 12-757 subsection D provides that a majority of the members of the Planning Commission present and voting is what's required to approve or deny an application. So at that time, there was 12 members present, so it would require seven members to pass any motion at that time, just for clarification.
Thank you for that information, and I would love to challenge the state on that one. So you have five people on a commission of 14 members that can make decisions that are binding for the, for that entire board. I just think that's bad, bad setup. It may be because they didn't think it through, I don't know why they did it that way, but I would, I would challenge the wisdom of making it five people that can make, you know, do business for a 14-member board. But thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Scott, I have some follow-up if?
Sure, yes, sir.
If this was to get sent back, and I must put you on the spot for all your staff, but, I mean, this is a pretty thought-out protective overlay. My heartburn is that when we start throwing GC in the middle of residential, it will be residential. I understand there's GC on the south of it. I have a hunch that's going to get rezoned into single family, based on what I know of what's coming to the moorings addition moving north. This will be residential on all four sides. And some of it's going to be very high-end residential. That's my heartburn, is we're throwing a patchwork of GC in the middle of residential. And certainly wouldn't want that in my neighborhood. What do you, what would the protective overlay, what would that, what else could you throw in here that would create some sort of, reduce some of my angst, I guess?
Sure, sure. You know, a couple of things that we look for when it comes to storage units is, number one, screening. So already, there would be required a fence that would go around the property. Another thing that we look at sometimes is landscaping. Already, they've included landscaping. Perhaps we increase that or double it or something to get additional trees, more greenery to buffer the areas to the north and to the east, right? Another thing that we typically hear about is sometimes dust concerns. That comes up with this one, there, already their protective overlay would require paving of those, so that's not going to be as much of an issue. The other thing with this, too, is that it comes off of 53rd Street, it's got access right off of there, so you're not going to see traffic onto the residential streets. Sometimes security is a big issue, but again, I don't know, this one actually kind of benefits from having the residences nearby, because I don't know, I think that that eyes on the street kind of helps to keep that nuisance away. The lighting then, and sometimes architecture is another thing that we look at. Sometimes they want to have these designed to have more of a residential aesthetic to them, so maybe something like a pitched roof and more residential shingles, not so much metal, maybe some stucco or something on the facade of it, just to make it blend in a little bit more with the surrounding uses. So those are, those are possible and potential ideas.
Okay. Okay. Kind of getting a pulse for where everybody's at. I'll hold off on making my motion, because I think I have an idea of where everybody's heads at, or some of my colleagues' heads are at, and what they're wanting to get some peace in this. So let's keep asking some questions, and then we'll figure out a motion. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more question. Do we, do we have to dissolve this case, do we have to resolve this case today, or like send it back, or approve it, or deny it? Or do we have any choice to like give ourselves a little bit more time on this one?
Go ahead, just.
Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. The board, if you would wish to do so, you could defer it. I would suggest if you would do that, to state a definitive date in any motion.
The reason I'm asking is because my mind is kind of going crazy, you're thinking about all these storage unit projects we've seen come before this board. And some of them have been approved, I think most of them have been approved, a couple have been denied. And what I'm getting to is the consistency of this board. I'm thinking about one that's over, it was over, I believe, at 63rd Street South and Hydraulic. Not very much different than this one, actually. It was undeveloped, undeveloped land right across the street, one direction was a golf course, and the other way is million-dollar homes. And we had a property that was undeveloped, that was a commercial site on the corner that was undeveloped, commercial, zoned on one corner. And we approved an entire storage unit property there, hasn't been put in yet, and the folks around that were very, very upset. We had a huge protest on that one, we still approved it. So I guess what I'd like to say is, I'd like to maybe go back and look at some of these cases and say, for consistency's sake, I think we need to, we need to stop being, you know, favor on this one and not favor on that one. I don't know that this one is substantially different than those other cases. And I find it bothersome that we're inconsistent. And so I would like some time to review those other cases, just to get my mind straight. And I would say a couple of weeks would be reasonable. I would love to see this, defer this for two weeks. I know our next meeting, maybe the March 5th meeting would be reasonable, bring this up for maybe a final, I don't know, we have to go to a public hearing again. I just need some time to look at this and formulate my ideas as to why we would support or deny this one in light of other cases, if that's even allowed to do that. But I want us to be consistent. And I would be one to make a motion just a moment to defer this to March 5th.
Okay. I'm going to extend for Commissioner Meitzner. I want to extend, part of the, I agree with Commissioner Howell on the consistency piece of it. I think that some of this heartburn for me is, we had a case next door two months ago where we took votes to say, man, GC going into residential is really difficult. So this is the challenge, and I guess if we're going to defer, I would want to have some clarity on storage units and self-storage and some of these things, to try to better understand some of these things, as to, I appreciate the protective overlay. I think the protective overlay is helpful. It's the only reason this has even got to this point, frankly, is the protective overlay. But I, when any commissioner asks for more time, we've always honored that for a variety of reasons. But the consistency is an important piece of this for a lot of reasons. And it's the challenge when you get into patchwork zoning. The other option is Houston, so. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, if we did send this back to, to the Planning Commission, that's going to take a month before it gets back in front of us. So I would hope maybe that if we did send it back with, there are two things that I'm concerned about. I would like to recognize the chairman's concern if we send it back with improved protective, you know, facade considerations. Try to make, mess up my, my motion here. But to make it aesthetically focused, that would help out of respect for the chairman's concern, to see if it, if it came back with aesthetics that would be pleasing to the area as well as the chairman. And also, at the same time, if I make this motion this way, it would give Commissioner Howell and others time to go ahead and research the history of consistency that you're concerned with. So I don't see why we have to defer it for, I don't mean against it. Okay, you're giving me a little thumbs up? Okay. Unless there's other comments, I'll, I'll make the motion or whatever. Okay.
Okay.
That's a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Bluebaw.
Thank you, Chairman.
Do we know what, what, what kind of timeline the developer's on? Like, is this going to do something that's really going to, you know, mess up their plans? I guess I'm just trying to understand more.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Bluebaw. As far as I know, this developer, they've got another business that they run. I don't know that this is like a pressing, if I don't get it today, I'm going to just go bankrupt. But, so I don't, I don't think, I think that if we can push towards more understanding, and maybe you all, you know, seeing things my way, I hate to say it that way, but to get more understanding and to help you all maybe approve this, they would be willing, obviously, to delay is not, is not a big deal on that case.
Maybe give them some time to be thoughtful of what they want, as well as what's acceptable to that neighborhood.
Yep.
Commissioner Wise.
Just a couple of observations. It sounds like, you know, 53rd Street might be trying to develop more as a commercial through-street in that area, and I'll lean to Chairman, since this is his district, but just kind of an observation that it seems like we keep getting these requests to go to more of a commercialized 53rd Street, you know, going through. So that's one thing that I think is important to understand, just as future development goes. Is it appropriate, I'm new here, is it appropriate to ask for renderings, or are those typically supplied when considering this type of zoning change, so we can understand the architectural piece of that?
You can certainly request those. It's not something that we require as part of the process, but you can certainly request those if it would help you to get a better understanding of what's being proposed.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we return to the Planning Commission for consideration of improved aesthetics and, and to return to the commission with a draft of architectural design. Is that livable for the applicant? The architectural design factor?
I can definitely try. One of the issues, and Commissioner Wise, to your question, is there's, there's a financial burden that goes into providing those elevations from an architect, and to do that with, before you get the zoning, it's, it's tough to do. I can definitely ask if there's a percentage that we can do of EFIS or something that's similar to a stucco look, but?
Okay, well.
Renderings, I'll ask, but I'm not 100% sure.
I understand, well, I think with the concern of aesthetic improvements kind of encompasses that, what we're referencing. So my motion is to return to the, to the Planning Commission with consideration for improved aesthetics, and I don't think anything, that'll be my motion.
Second, Commissioner Bluebaw. Okay. One comment, Scott, and I don't know if this is a discussion that needs to happen when they rehear this, but we have a comprehensive plan that's here for guidance, that talks about buffers in between residential and GC. And I think that we need to have an understanding on the strength and the validity of our comprehensive plan. I know it's just for guidance, but if we're being consistent, we need to have a consistent understanding of the weight of the comprehensive plan. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Jay, thank you for being here. Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, island annexation request by the City of Wichita pursuant to the, to the City of Wichita Resolution Number 25-031. Resolution Number 25-031.
Hi, Samantha.
Hello. I'm presenting the City of Wichita's request to island annex a parcel of land pursuant to KSA 12-520C. The property owner, TCRS LLC, requested the city to annex its property that's located on the south side of West MacArthur Road and on the west side of Cave 42 Highway. On January 21st, 2025, the City of Wichita passed a resolution finding it was in the best interest of the public to annex the parcel into the city limits. The City of Wichita sent a copy of the resolution to the county on January 28th, 2025, and asked this board to make the requisite statutory findings. By statute, the board must make these findings within 30 days of receiving the city's certified resolution. I'm going to go to the map. The property that's proposed to be annexed is approximately 4.73 acres and is outlined in yellow. An island annexation is when a property that is proposed to be annexed does not adjoin the city's contiguous city limits. And as you can see, where's, oh, I don't have, the city limits starts over here. And so there's an area right here where it's not abutting the city limits, nor is it abutting any of the arterial. So this is why it's an island annexation. The annexation area is approximately 260 feet diagonally southwest of the nearest city, Wichita city limits. State statute lays out three requirements for an annexation, island annexation to occur. One, the land has to be located in the same county as the city. That's the case here. The owners of the property must request the annexation, which is what they have done here. And then the third step is today's hearing, which is where the county commissioners, by a two-third vote, finds that the annexation will not hinder and prevent proper growth and development of the area or that of any other city within Sedgwick County. So we need a four out of five vote today. The property is within the City of Wichita's 2035 growth area. It is not located within the growth area of any other city in Sedgwick County. The property owner has indicated an intent to request rezoning from SF 20, which is single-family residential, to TF 3, which allows two-family dwellings as well as single-family homes. The owner has submitted plaques to the planning department. All of these uses fit within the comprehensive plan. Upon annexation, the city would provide water and sewer services, road maintenance, fire, and police services. Sedgwick County staff has been advised of this, and they do not have any objections to this proposed island annexation. With that, I would urge you to make a motion and finding once you've concluded discussion on this item, and I can stand for any questions.
Okay, very good, Samantha. Appreciate this. We've all been briefed on this. It's been our custom to allow the city to make comment. Is anyone from the city here present? I don't believe so.
No.
Okay.
No.
Good. Okay. Very good. Okay, Commissioners, any questions on this? And if you can just provide, the scope of our decision is based on not hindering or preventing the proper growth and development of the area or that any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County. That's the scope of the decision for us, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Bluebaw.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a comment that, you know, this is something that I worked on for several years on the city side, because we wanted to make sure we were, we had to extend the water down Maze Road quite a ways, and I believe we've already extended sewer services down there. So this has been years in the making, and I think the intention all along was to get the city services down there so that we can annex it into the city.
Very good. Okay. Okay, that being said, I'll go ahead and move to approve the recommended action, which is a finding that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, Samantha. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, Presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends in Sedgwick County.
Okay. Mark Clark and Ronnie Tidwell's coming down. We've kind of been briefed on this already and waiting in anticipation. Mr. Clark, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. Mark Clark, Sedgwick County Appraiser. This morning, I will be presenting the 2025 Annual Real Estate Mass Appraisal Report. Start it here. Let's start off with the Appraiser's Office duties. We inspect each property within Sedgwick County every six years. That doesn't mean that we can't be on your property more often if there are sales, building permits, appeal, field inspections, et cetera. But we will be there at least every six years. Discover list and value, all property that had significant changes. Update appraisals each year to assure that all properties are valued at fair market value, and the statutory appraisal date is January 1. Key dates. January 1 is the official appraisal date. March 1, you will receive your value notices. They'll be mailed slightly before March 1, but the statutory date is March 1. March 15, personal property renditions are due to the Appraiser's Office, and as long as you get it in by then, you won't get a penalty. March 17, real property informal meetings begin. May 1, personal property valuation notices are mailed. May 20, real and personal property appeal result letters must be mailed. June 1 is when we certify, when the Appraiser certifies to the county clerk. Those are the important dates for the Appraiser, and there are other important dates there as well for your information. Value considerations. Now, when we looked at 2025 valuation, there were several things that we took into consideration. One was equalization, golden handcuffs effect, Federal Reserve interest rates, inflation, labor shortages, tight supply of housing, and supply chain issues. Looking at those issues, equalization. My office conducts studies on properties throughout the year to ensure that like properties are treated similarly. Continuous improvement in data collection processes and data consistency is essential. We correct data and we adjust values. Good data drives good values. Golden handcuffs. Property owners who have enjoyed low-interest rate mortgages at 3.5% or less do not want to give up those low rates for the current higher interest rates. So there are some tough choices to make. Some potential home buyers forego buying a new house and wait for lower rates, while others may jump in and have become somewhat acclimated in this higher-interest rate environment, and they buy a home with less square footage. Federal Reserve interest rates. Borrowing costs are expensive for developers, builders, the public, units of government, and interest rates influence our decisions. Inflation. Even though inflation is moderated from a high of 9.1%, it has increased every month since September 2024 and ended January 25 at around 3%. Prices remain high and sticky. It will take time for prices to fall, and it's expensive for citizens, businesses, and units of government to purchase goods and services. Labor shortages. This is one that we all have to deal with, especially here at Sedgwick County. Finding qualified talent is a major challenge to employers in both the private and public sector. This situation impacts the start of a project, the length of time it takes to complete a project, the quality of work performed, and the amount of rework needed to complete a Tight supply of housing. Imbalance between supply and demand for homes is still a major issue at play in the local, regional, and national economy. Demand is high and the supply of homes is tight. Thus, prices increase as a result of this continuing imbalance. How are we going to build more homes? The Trump tariffs are a negotiating tool, but it's important to note that recent data shows approximately 70% of all supplies used in building a new home comes from Canada or Mexico. For example, lumber, plumbing supplies, et cetera. At what point do those tariffs potentially cause a problem, and how bad will that problem be? Also, let's not forget the resources that will be needed to rebuild homes, businesses, and infrastructure in North Carolina, California, Tennessee, Kentucky, Florida, and other locations that have been devastated by natural disasters. And on top of that, the increased cost of insurance. Supply chain issues. Citizens and businesses and units of government are impacted when there is difficulty in obtaining parts and other materials, which result in increased costs, delays on projects, and create situations where planned projects never get started. Parcel growth in Sedgwick County. From 2024 to 2025, the number of parcels grew from 232,780 to 236,182, or by 1.5%. Heat map. What are the hotspots here? And this year is all-new parcel growth, 21, 2021 through 2024. Hotspots are Maze, Goddard, northwest Wichita, you've got east Wichita, Bel Air. So things are definitely growing. And if you look at the east, excuse me, the west here, the northwest bypass, a lot of those new parcels there are along that path. So I believe that that is a good indication that that roadway would definitely benefit Sedgwick County. Parcels by class. Now, this is the percentage of parcels by classification. The pie chart represents the percent of parcels for each classification. Residential, 78%, or 185,326 parcels. Agriculture, 7%, at 17,472 parcels. Commercial, at 6%, 14,581 parcels. Vacant, 4%, 8,277. Exempt, 3%, 6,443 parcels. Farmsteads, 2%, 3,618 parcels. And then utility, not-for-profit, and other is less than 1%. Sales activity, all classes, and by that I mean residential, ag, and commercial. From 2023 to 2024, total sales activity for all classes of property increased from 11,389 sales to 11,642, or 2.2%. For 2024, total sales activity increased due to cautious optimism in the market. And that is something that is interesting. You have cautious optimism, yet you still have relatively high interest rates and high Total parcel sales, 2021 to 2024. Yellow on this map indicates where most of the sales occurred. From 2021 to 2024, there was a reduction of 23.5% in total parcel sales. However, if you use a reference point, as I was talking with Commissioner Bluebaw back in 2026, it was 15,767. Yet in 2021, you had 15,046. COVID money made the difference there. And the hotspots here are Maze, Goddard, all across Wichita, especially on the east and the northwest, Bel Air and Derby. Construction, all classes. This year is going to be residential, ag, and commercial. From 2023 to 2024, total new construction, and this is permits, not actual bills, these are permits, for all classes of real property increased from 6,555 to 6,763, for an increase of 3.2%. These numbers do not include permits for roofs, siding, or towers, as they do not add value or very little value. This one is an interesting one. Mill levy. County actual levies. And this here is a comparison of the large counties. Looking to your right, and that'll be 2024, all the way to the right, first one up is Shawnee, then you have Douglas, then you have Wyandotte. And notice how Wyandotte bends down, because they reduced their mills by four mills. And that is because the unified government has two budgets. You have the city and the county. And the county transferred some duties over to the city, and it allowed them to reduce their mills by four. Then that purple line there is Sedgwick, and the last, down at the bottom, is Johnson. This is for county government only. They're not total levies, just the county. Then, if you look at the average county total levy, once again, you have Wyandotte, you're going to have Wyandotte up at the top, but look how it bends down without four mills reduction. Then you have Shawnee. Then that dotted line might be, that is your average statewide mill levy. And riding along, almost on top of that, and then it bends down slightly in 2024, is Douglas. Then you have Sedgwick, and you have Johnson. Let's talk about residential. Residential property represented about 62% of total assessed value in Sedgwick County. Residential represents 67% of the total real property assessed valuation. Excuse me. New residential dwellings, 2021 to 2024. This represents single-family, duplex, triplex, and quadplex. Hotspots, Maze, Goddard, Bel Air, east Wichita. You're going to have some there in northwest Wichita, Derby. And, excuse me. In 2024, that number that is in the chart there, that number will most likely change because when we're out data collecting, there were some things out there where, when we went out and data collected, there wasn't enough to really data collect. And so PVD says, PVD is Property Evaluation Division of Kador, that is my boss, the director of PVD, and in order to be counted, it really needs to have 40% completion or greater in order to have real data collection done on it. Residential property sales. For 2024, residential sales increased by 582 transactions, or 5.6%. And it was due to cautious optimism in the market. If you look at the totality there, from 2019 to 2024, residential sales decreased by 8%. Thank you. And 20, but if you take the number from 2021 to 2024, residential sales would have decreased by 21.8%. So just interesting facts there. So, just interesting facts there. New dwelling construction, and this is permits only, and this is going to be single-family, duplex, triplex, and quadruplex. The information on new dwellings is based on the number of permits received from MABCD and municipalities in Sedgwick County. It does not measure the actual number of new dwellings started or completed, they're just permits. So, from 2023 to 2024, new dwelling permits increased by fifteen point six percent due to the cautious optimism in the market. Let's look at residential inventory. I had several commissioners ask about this, so this is rather interesting. The red line at four months on the chart is the bottom threshold for a normal market. Normal market residential is four to six months. In January 2024, the supply reached, the supply of residential inventory was at one point seven months. And it steadily increased, and at year-end hit two point seven months. And then, well, actually, right before the end, and then at the end, it hit two point three. Relatively high interest rates and high prices impacted the residential market. Once again, the impact, golden handcuffs. People don't want to let go of those low mortgages, low-interest-rate mortgages. Looking at the residential inventory, month supply by asking price. So, it's stratified by price range, or price, asking price range. And as you can see, that the only price range there that even comes close to a normal market is the last, to the far right, four hundred thousand to four hundred and ninety-nine nine nine nine. And it meets that criteria of a normal market for about six months, but the rest of them are way below that four-month threshold. Residential inventory. Month supply, large county comparison. When you look at the dark purple line up top, that is Sedgwick. Going across to the right, that is two point three months, that's where they ended. Wyandotte ended at one point nine, Johnson at one point seven, Douglas at one point four, and Shawnee at one point one. Relatively high interest rates and high prices impacted the residential sales activity. Residential inventory. Median days on the market. This is Sedgwick County only. So, when you look at these lines, the deep, dark purple one is the 2024 Sedgwick County line. And in January 2024, Sedgwick County median days on the market was twenty-one. Now, if you think at the same time last year, this time last year, it was eleven days. So, it's almost double. In April through June, excuse me. In April through June of 2024, the median days on the market was six, and increased to sixteen at year's end. Once again, relatively high interest rates and high prices slowed the residential market in 2024. Let's look at the residential inventory, median days on the market by asking price. And here, that you do see a red line, is ten days, that is just a reference point there. But if you look at the one-fifty, all the way to the two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine nine nine, those three price ranges there, that's where the heat was in the market for Residential inventory. Median days on the market, large county comparison. Johnson ended at forty-five days. Douglas, thirty-seven days. Wyandotte, thirty-five days. Sedgwick, sixteen days. And Shawnee at nine days. Very interesting. Now, let's talk about the median sales price overall for Sedgwick County. The 2024 median sales price for all residential property, and that's existing and new, increased from two hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred, or a three percent increase. However, if you dissect this into new and existing, and you look at that chart, the light blue is your existing inventory, and your dark blue are the new builds. So, for 2024, median sale price for newly-built residential property in Sedgwick County went from two hundred, excuse me, three hundred and eighty-two thousand seven seventy to three hundred and eighty thousand, a decrease of point seven-two percent. The 2024 median sale price for existing residential property in Sedgwick County increased from two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred to two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, or a four point four percent increase. Residential inventory. Median percent of asking price. Well, there's four price ranges here, and this is stratified by asking price range. From one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, those price ranges right there got a hundred percent of asking price. And if you look at the fifty thousand to one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine nine nine, they definitely had some struggles. Very interesting to see how the market, parts of the market struggled, and others stayed relatively strong, or somewhat strong. Residential median, excuse me, median sale prices, and this here is going, excuse me, is going to be large county comparison. So, this is pretty amazing. You've got High Fly in Johnson County, who's just taking off like an airplane there, at four hundred and fifty thousand. Then you have the national average, wow, at about four hundred and fifteen thousand. Then you've got Douglas, that's around three hundred and twenty-five thousand. You've got Sedgwick, that's at two fifty-five hundred. Wyandotte, around two hundred thousand. And then you have Shawnee, around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now, let's look at, when we talk about mill levies, residential effective tax rate. So, you're taking, excuse me, you're taking the, and this is going to be large county comparison, so you're taking each county's average levy times the residential assessment ratio of eleven and a half percent. And that's how you're coming up with that ETR, that effective tax rate. So, once again, you have the bending down for Wyandotte, and they're up top, you've got Shawnee, you've got the statewide average levy, then Douglas, then Sedgwick, and Johnson. Commercial. Commercial property represents about twenty-nine percent of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County, and it represents thirty-one percent of the total real property assessed valuation. Heat map. New commercial buildings, 2021 through 2024. Mays, East Wichita, Derby, Bel Air, Goddard, those tended to be the hotspots, but there's a sprinkling across the city of Wichita and other locations there in the county. Commercial property sales. Commercial property sales increased three point one percent due to cautious optimism in the market. However, some local investors have started diversifying their portfolios. There have been some that have literally sold many of their commercial properties to invest in other things. Excuse me. Commercial building permit activity. From 2023 to 2024, commercial permit activity decreased thirteen point nine percent. Supply, excuse me, supply chain issues continue to disrupt the completion of projects. Therefore, projects are taking longer to complete, and there are fewer permits that are being taken out. Even though interest rates are relatively high and prices remain high, the demand for large warehouses, large specialty buildings, and other types of commercial buildings has When you look at the commercial building square footage, which is quite interesting. Looking at the chart, down below, you see a grid. There are six commercial property types down there. There are more than six property types in Sedgwick County. And that total is the copulation, or the summation, of all the property types, not just those six. Take, for example, up top, you have the warehouse, that there is going to be your top line up there. And, excuse me, residential, you see on that grid, and you say, well, Mark, residential, you said commercial. But here, we're talking about apartments, hotels, and assisted living. And exempt are your churches, your schools, post office, government buildings, things of that sort. There are more than six commercial property types. And the sum is basically the summation of all those types. And since January 2018 through, and, excuse me, it'd be 2019 through 2024, there is a total of seventeen million six hundred and seven thousand thirty-nine square feet of commercial space has been added. And from 2024 to 2025, there is two million one hundred and fifty-three thousand thirty-six square feet of commercial space has been added. Now, if you look at the commercial effective tax rate here, you're, once again, this is going to be large county comparison, you're taking each county's average mill levy times the commercial assessment ratio of twenty-five percent, and that's how you're calculating that F, that ETR. Up top, on that dark blue line, you have Wyandotte. Then you come down, next you have Shawnee. Then you have the statewide average mill levy, you have Douglas, you have Sedgwick, and then you have Johnson. Now, we've all talked about this several times, and this is information on sales ratio study. And this is information on the preliminary mid-year sales ratio. This doesn't make me happy. From 2022, 23, and 24, we're talking about the median ratio. For residential, for 22, we were out. For 23, we were out. For 24, we were out. Looking at commercial, 22, we were out. For 23, we were out. And for 24, we were in. Now, when we talk about this, this is just the preliminary. We'll go more into that in a minute, but the 2024 preliminary is the latest information that we have from PVD. We use this information, as well as our internal ratio studies, for the 2025 valuation. In the preliminary sales ratio study, there's lots of cleanup to do. There's some real junk in there, because we believe there are sales that should not be included in the ratio study. And then we have to go and research each of those sales. And much like when property owners are appealing their value, we appeal to PVD that we want those sales out. So, we have to do our research, we have to document everything, and then we have to send our evidence, and they will make the final determination as to whether it will be included, be left in, or will it be excluded from the final ratio study. So, when we go to the next, excuse me, slide, that is the final compliance sales ratio study. Well, it looks a little different, because 21, 22, 23, and we don't have our final for 24, and we won't get that until September. However, when you look at residential, we are in, and we did not need the confidence interval. The numbers in the parentheses are the confidence intervals. And you can be in by the confidence interval. In 22, we were in, and we had to use the confidence interval. In 23, we were in, but we didn't need the confidence interval. Commercial, and 21, we were in, needed the confidence interval. At 22 and 23, not even the confidence interval would help us there. And remember, when it comes to the compliance requirement, whether it's residential or commercial, we have to be between ninety and one-ten. That is an absolute fact. And so, when we look at what happened to values in 2025, and we're getting there, we had to increase values. It was absolutely necessary. So, the final compliance ratio study results are provided to counties in September after sales appeals have been decided by PVD. We believe that 2024 final study will show Sedgwick County is in compliance. We've worked very hard this year to achieve that goal. Looking at the sales ratio, this here is residential. And you can see that they are, they have been in. Usually, they don't need the confidence interval. And 20, for 2022, they did, they were still in compliance, but they had to have the upper confidence interval there. And then for 23, they were in without the confidence interval. Typically, we like to be, when we're valuing, we like to be ninety-five percent of sales. I don't want to undershoot, I don't want to overshoot. So, a conservative, cautious approach to valuation has always been what I have liked to do. I think that it is the proper way to do it, because if you overshoot, that's not good. And so, once again, if you look, you see that red line on there, and that is the ninety percent. If you look at the next, that is commercial. Now, the upper confidence interval got us in, in seventeen, we didn't need the confidence interval, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and 21, we needed the upper confidence interval. And for 22 and 23, nothing was going to help us there. We were simply out. Let's talk a minute about agriculture. Now, this is very interesting, at least to me, because even though the state has designated Sedgwick County as an urban county, it still has four hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-nine acres, or sixty-seven point one percent of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to agricultural use. Agricultural property represented less than one percent of the total assessed value. I always like to remind, excuse me, I always like to remind people that there are three programs that the legislature has put in place to help provide relief. Now, some people have used these programs, have applied for them, and didn't get anything. I would encourage them to keep trying, because the legislature keeps making adjustments there. So, one of them is the Homestead Property Tax Refund, Saser Property Tax Refund, and the Senior Disabled Veteran Saver Tax Refund Program. The clerk's office, they're knowledgeable and very competent, and they are always willing to help people in filling out their forms and providing information. So, that is the place to contact if you are interested in those programs. And And property owners have until April 15th to file. And that is a hard line date. It is in statute, so please be mindful of that. Now, we come to the slide that everybody wants to see. 2025 valuation summary. Residential parcels, 12% will experience a no change in value. 87% increase in value typical change was 9%. 1% decreased in value typical change 6%. Commercial parcels, 19%, no change in value. 73% increased in value with a typical change of 11%. 8% decreased in value typical change 3%. Agricultural parcels, 28%, no change in value. 14% experienced an increase in value typical change was 5%. That tends to be your native and tame grasses, your pasture land and feed. 58% decrease in value typical change was 13%. And that decrease came because high commodity prices continued to roll off the year moving The next three slides are information for your review. If you have any questions, let me know, but this is historical data, and also this year's data is included, and it's just a summation of what has happened. Commissioner Howell asked for this several years ago, and we have kept up the information. And if you have any questions, let me know. So when we talk about the mailing of value notices. Cedric County Appraiser's Office will only mail value notices to property owners that experienced a change in appraised value or classification for 2024. Approximately 204,355 real property value notices will be mailed for 2025, which is about 87% of all real properties in Cedric County. And the total number of real properties is 236,190. So if you didn't get a value notice, beginning March 1, you can go online and you can view your appraisal information. You can look at your value notice. You can print it off, flip it over, sign it, fill out, and send it back to the appraiser's office. We will be glad to schedule an appeal meeting for you. Also, you can go on to our online portal, which is on the website as well, and you can fill out the information there, and we will be glad to schedule that appeal for you. Also, online, not only can you see your value notices that have instructions in how to file an appeal, there will be comp sales reports, your cost report, and your property record card. So the sales appeals process. If property owners don't think their value reflects fair market value or like an explanation of how the value was determined, file for an appeal. We will be glad to talk to you and help you understand that. If you fill out the back of your value notice and return it to the Cedric County Appraiser's Office, or file the request through the Smart File Portal online, but you need to do that within 30 days of the date indicated on the front of the notice. Appeal meetings begin March 17, 2025. They will be conducted primarily by telephone. However, we will accommodate in person as well. This is a statement that PVD Property Evaluation Division always wants appraisers to read. So please remember that the county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner and should not be considered an adversary. Increases or decreases in property values do not change the amount of tax dollars needed for local services. And then we put three equations on here that I think everyone should know. One of them is how your assessed value is calculated. And that appraised value, that is the only thing the appraiser can change. We don't set tax rates. We don't collect taxes. We appraise property. We find fair market value. Appraised value times assessment rate equals assessed value. Budget needed divided by assessed value equals mill levy. Assessed value times mill levy are taxes due. Let's talk just a few minutes about personal property. Personal property represents about 2.3 of the total assessed value. Personal property renditions are due back March 15 to avoid penalty. Personal property valuation notices will be mailed April 30. Deadline to file an appeal is May 15. That 2025 number there is low because there are several weeks still before we hit the March 15 filing deadline, and that is a statutory deadline. That number will continue to grow throughout the year, late filers, and you also have some pro rations coming onto the roll as well. Looking at this chart, you can see that the individual personal property, and that's your watercraft, your ATVs, et cetera, that's your top line up there. That there is the bulk of the personal property when it comes to accounts. Then, when you're looking at the middle line, that's your CIME, and your bottom line is the oil and gas. Once again, the 2025 numbers will continue, are not final. They continue to grow as far as the number of accounts. Customer service. Customer service is something the county appraiser's office takes very seriously. We do have a special division that helps. It is the front face of the county appraiser's office. That is our Information and Assistance Division. They are located at 271 West Third Street, Suite 501, here in Wichita. It's across from City Hall. You can also go to the website, www.cedriccounty.org. There you can get appeals process information, real property values, real property sales. You can find your cost report, your property record card, your value notice. There's a host of information there. And also, you can call 316-660-9000. We're eager to help, so just let us know how we can help you. I want to thank my staff for their hard work and professionalism in this. Commissioners, I thank you for your support in allowing me to present this morning. Thank you, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Clark, thank you, sir. We also want to echo a thanks to your staff. A lot of hard work goes into it. There's a lot of property in Cedric County, and your staff does a wonderful job. And the customer service is good, too. So we're grateful for that. And so, please, Mark, Ron, make sure that your staff understands how grateful we are for the work they do.
Okay. I'd imagine there's going to be some questions or some comments. So commissioners, any thoughts you'd like to share? Commissioner Bluebaum.
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess just jumping right into it, looking at Slide 23, you know, it looks like from 2019 to 2024, average value going from 169.5 to 250,500. So that's one and a half times what your value was in six years. So it's probably safe to assume that your property taxes are one and a half times higher than what they were six years ago. Would that be fair?
Well, I mean, I'd say, I wouldn't necessarily say that. I mean, we have values, but when we talk about taxes, you're talking about mill levies, and there are governor bodies out there. This governing body uses a somewhat cautious approach in how they handle their budget. Some of the others, I can't necessarily say the same thing. And so to answer your question truthfully, I can't, without putting a pencil to that, I can't really answer that question.
Okay. I guess some of my concern is, is we're starting to see more days on the market. You know, you talked about the doubling we had a few years ago. Now we've had another doubling of 11 to 22 days. 11 days may not sound like much, but when you're looking at the data, that's a pretty big deal, and really concerned with overvaluing the property. And we talk a lot about the unrealized gain, and there's people that don't want to turn loose their 3% mortgage, and we're seeing, you know, properties just not moving. I guess my concern comes back to, when they come back and tell you that you're out of compliance, what data do they have that's, you know, as far as, I always think of real estate as local. So how's the state got better oversight than what Cedric County Appraisers? What activities are they doing to contribute to a stronger data than ones you have here?
They have all the sales we have. And yes, we call on all those sales. They also call on all of the sales as well. Sometimes people will tell them things they won't tell us. There are times when locally, they'll tell us, but they won't tell the state. So that's where that sales ratio comes in. And all right, what evidence do you have, Mark and staff, that we should kick this out of the ratio? Also, they have their field agents out, and they are out in the counties, and they are looking at property and so forth, and they come into our offices. So they're actually out there and getting a pretty good idea of what's going on.
Okay.
I'm not going to say they're perfect. They're not, and we certainly aren't either.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for now. I appreciate all the work into this, and I appreciate, you know, the courtesy of having all these different graphs and stuff to look at. It really helps to better understand it.
But all, like I've said, to all the commissioners, Commissioner Bluebaum, if you have any question, further questions, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meister.
Thank you. Thanks again. I repeat the thank yous that they've all said. Do you do the same presentation to the city of Wichita?
The city has not allowed me to do that. However, if we were to do a presentation for the city of Wichita, I would probably tailor it for them.
If, well, dovetail on that question. So if some of the growing communities in districts, Mays, Bel Air, if they would want a presentation, would it be a lot of effort to
We could do it.
To appear for them?
We could do that.
Yeah, that might be helpful for, at least in the growing areas.
Sure. We're always open to that.
We can reach out individually and find out. So thank you.
Hey, Mark, couple of questions. Compliance requirements, 90, I have some questions about this. So you have a requirement to get within compliance. It's 90 to 110. 90 to 110% of what? Is that the sales data in the market?
Yes, sales price.
Now, you say that when you're low, and you were consistently low, we've noticed, and you used a couple phrases. You said that we're out. What does that mean when you're out and you're low? Could you explain to the public what that means?
Well, when you're out, it means that you're out of compliance. And when you're looking at, let me get to that chart right here. Just bear with me one minute, Commissioner. All right. Here, say, for example, if you're 90 to 110, and you're looking on the residential, and you say 2021, you're in. You didn't have to have the confidence interval. You're in just by the median ratio itself.
Snuck in, yeah.
If you look at the, let's say, we look at the commercial 2022, nowhere, none of those numbers are even close to 90. We are out. That means that we need to be raising values so that we can get back into compliance.
So out on the low side means that the state, or PVD, or the formula is suggesting that you are undervaluing property in Cedric County?
That is correct.
Okay. And by quite a substantial margin there?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, remember that the market is constantly moving against you, at least at this time when prices are rising. So that's another detriment that you have to take into consideration when you're moving values up.
Okay. Here's a question I get frequently. You are either, on all of this, for residential, commercial, you're either out on the low side, meaning that the formula is telling you you're undervaluing property, or you're just barely in
Right.
... compliance. And when you say, we had to increase values, what does that look like? I'll tell you what I get from time to time is, well, because we're out of compliance, we have to manipulate values to get them higher. And I think people get a little reserved in that regard to say that, well, just because of the compliance ratio, you've got to look at my property, and you've got to throw some valuation on top of it just to get us into this compliance ratio that the state tells us we have to be in. When you say, we had to increase values, what does that look like?
Understand that, yes, this is a driving force in our valuation. However, we do all kinds of analysis, and we are out there data collecting for months and getting that data back into the office. We're doing analysis. We have to share all of that with PVD because that is the substantial portion of the compliance. Here, you have two portions of compliance. It is your sales ratio, but you also have the procedural and statutory compliance. Excuse me. And all of that goes into determining what you're going to do with values.
Okay. All right, my last question. At the end of your presentation, you had mentioned the process of appeals. What percentage of property owners, when they file an appeal, get a change in value? Do you have an idea what that is? There's an impression that I'm not going to waste my time. What percentage of people that make an appeal have a change in value?
It is, it typically runs about 50% on the residential. This past year, it was a little higher than that, that did not get a change. I think it was in the upper 60s. But when we look at a market like we have that's moving, and it's difficult to make changes when you know the market is moving, and also when it comes to the sales ratio, you know that if you don't move that up, you're only going to be lower when they do the final ratio study.
Okay. Well, that's helpful.
I can also tell you that when it comes to commercial, commercial was a high no change rate because many people on the commercial side that file for an appeal do not provide any documentation. Now, some of these are handled by tax representatives, and sometimes we get absolutely nothing. And if we don't have anything to help us or guide us into what they think is wrong, they're probably going to get a no change.
I appreciate that. All right. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Just a few questions. Thank you for the presentation. So on the sales ratio study, especially the final one, who actually makes the selection of the parcels that are going into that comparison, that calculation? Is this the PVD action, or is this an action of the local appraiser's office?
All right. Will you please restate your question or say it again?
What I'm saying is, we're not comparing all of the properties that are sold. We are picking some of the properties for a comparison on the sales ratio study. Is the PVD making that choice, or is this something?
It makes that choice.
Okay. And I'll get to that in a few minutes. Thank you for that clarification. Just to be clear, they're not actually looking at all of the properties. They're just looking at a portion of those properties.
Correct.
And I don't know why they picked them exactly, but I'm sure they have some criteria they're looking for.
They do.
Okay. Couple of old pieces of old business here. A long time ago, on outbuildings in the unincorporated areas of our county, we changed the depreciation schedule for outbuildings. It was, I think, a number of years, like 25, and they changed it to 40 or 50 years, which essentially extended, if you will, the value of that property much longer. It was on a depreciation schedule much like personal property would be devalued over a number of years. What's, what is, are we, is this a local decision, or is that something that is now consistent across the state with state law mandating, if you will, a number of years?
It is mandated by law. County appraisers are expected to do depreciation studies within their county. And when that is done, that is something we also have to turn into PVD. And I do know they do have a compilation study, basically, of what that looks like as far as your outbuildings or residential properties or commercial properties, et cetera.
And so do you know what that, is it, am I right about, it goes over a number of years, like 50 years or
Yes.
Something like that? And do you know if other counties follow the same? I mean, do we have any idea what other counties around us are doing?
We do have discussions with them, and there are some similarities.
So I'll just say, for my, for everyone's, I guess, understanding, this was a decision So I'll just say, for my, for everyone's, I guess, understanding, this was a decision made by the former appraiser and it created quite a stir in Sedgwick County. It kind of cooled off because I think people forgot about the discussion, but that was a pretty hot discussion for a while there. And essentially, it was viewed as a, as a pretty large tax increase because valuation on those buildings shot up in one year because the depreciation changed from like 25 years to 50 years and so.
Correct.
One other question. Last, last year, we had, a lot of folks were upset about the, the unincorporated areas of this, of the county did not have any, any comps shown. You had to use a different process to, to develop, if you will, the, the math behind a, a valuation of a particular property. But it didn't show comps because it was a software thing or something had changed to cause that to happen. Where are we on that today?
Basically, what we did is we did a study and we found that the majority of those rural residential properties were best served using the cost approach. However, this year, we have done, we have worked with Sedgwick County IT and we want people, when they go on to the website and they're looking at their property, we want them to know what approach to value that we used. Plus, there's also going to be some additional information that will help them understand how we value the property. That is almost complete. It's my understanding that by March 1, that will be up and ready.
Okay. I think that'll make a lot of people happier this year that didn't like that last year, but.
I would also like to point out, and it goes back to some, excuse me, some of the questions that I've been asked. When we talk about commercial being out of compliance, there is a statute out there that says, when that happens, that the state has to do, has to contract, they either go, they will either do it themselves or they will contract with a fee appraiser to get 1% of the commercial properties appraised by a fee appraiser. It's my understanding, they are doing that. And I've, I've also heard that several years ago, Johnson County was out of commercial compliance and they had the fee appraisers come and appraise 1% of their commercial properties. And they weren't going to share, PVD wasn't going to share the appraisals with them. So they wound up suing them to get the appraisal so they could find out where that was. And I have already told the state, I want to see the appraisals. Because if there's information out there that we don't have, that I need to properly appraise a property, I want my staff to have access to that information. Also, when it comes to compliance, PVD can remove an appraiser if they don't get at least 75% on the substantial compliance. I am very, even though we've had trouble with the ratio, I'm very pleased that we still have an overall A rating. We are in the 90s when it comes to overall compliance. So, yes, the sales ratio is a problem. We're working on it. I am convinced we're going to get better. But overall, we have an A rating in substantial compliance. And I am very proud of my staff for that.
I'm going to give you some, some credit here in a few minutes with some slides, if I have time, to show exactly how actually quite good the appraiser's office is. And I, I do want to give credit where credit's due. I know there are some stories of some folks that have credible errors perhaps, and we want them to make an appeal if that happens. There's a lot of misunderstanding exactly when someone sees a 30 or 40 or 50% change in one year, what's going on behind the scenes. We can talk about those in just a minute. But we, you know, we have to look at this as a, as a composite jurisdiction, if you will. What's going on jurisdiction-wise? Within the jurisdiction, you're going to have errors on an individual basis that we need, that creates a lot of, a lot of stories. And I would, I'd like to talk, talk about that in just a second. Two other quick questions here. Can you please explain how the ag land is done? I understand there's an eight-year moving average, rolling average on cost use. Can you please explain that?
Yes, there's an eight-year moving average and basically they're taking the landlord's share of the net income and they're applying a cap rate to it. And then that, for, for year one, that is going to be the first year. Then, once they get to year nine, that first year rolls off. It is an eight-year moving average.
Right. And they do that primarily, I assume they thought there is, that one year, you have a, a lot of revenue comes off of a piece of property, you had a great year, everything went really well for them. And the next year, exactly the opposite happens. They make nothing. They, they're basically bulldoze the, the crop or maybe not even able to, to plant because they're in the middle of a drought and they're just not going to invest in something that has no chance of creating, if you will, any, any profit that year. So the reasons why on eight-year moving average, one year, there's $0 available, maybe even, just maybe even a negative cost to the, them to have that land. And then next year, they have a really large profit perhaps. And so that eight-year moving average, if you will, gives them a way to provide, if you will, a evening out of those, of those years. How long has that law been in place? Do you have any idea?
I would say that has been in place at least since reappraisal.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about what year was that implemented? I mean, a long time ago?
I would say, to my knowledge, that would be, with the current ag value process, I believe that was in 89.
So a long, long time ago?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the commercial property, is dark store theory still being debated anywhere? Because I, I understand that that was a huge issue a few years ago. And I know we had legislation efforts to trying to kind of revisit that. A lot of our commercial friends, they, they'll tell you that there's, they, they appear to be frustrated because there's, in their opinion, a cherry picking that gives them the highest value based on different thoughts about traffic or, or retail sales or whatever. What are the, what are the different ways that commercial property can be appraised? And how do you select that one right method for any particular property?
Well, I mean, you're looking at a commercial property. I mean, there's three main approaches to value. You've got sales, you've got income, and you've got cost. And at the end, you're going to reconcile those three as best you can and come up with a final value. And so when you talk about dark store theory, I would say that there have been, in the last two years, especially in the last year, some significant court cases here in Sedgwick County, now, excuse me, not Sedgwick County, in Kansas, where dark store has really been challenged. And it's not the big booger bear that, that people at one time thought it was. I would say that it's still out there. There is a, an attorney that lives in Kansas, and she is probably the best property tax attorney in the country. And one of her specialties is dark store theory. But one of the cases, or at least two of the cases that I'm thinking about, she was the attorney and lost. So I think that there are, are, things are starting to, people are starting to open their eyes that are making these decisions. And I think it's a learning process for some of these boards and people to really understand what is happening as far as what some of the fee appraisers are doing and how county appraisers are looking at dark store theory. So I think that it's, do I think that it still could be a, a danger? Yes. But it's not as big a danger as I, it was once perceived.
So to be clear, on the commercial appraisals, you look at sales, income, and cost. How do you choose between those, one of those three? Is there some process or policy we follow that says, in this particular one, we're going to follow income because it's a Walmart and they have a lot of money coming in? And this one, they basically make no money and so we're going to use, you know, square footage and traffic and, or, you know, how do you, how do you decide between those three, when to use particular one?
Well, I mean, you're, you're looking. And there's appraisal judgment in this. And so when you're looking at, say, a hotel, you're going to look at, use, at the income approach. If you're doing a, a mega warehouse, you're, good chance you're going to look at the cost approach, but also the income approach. Sales on those, maybe not so much. When you look at, say, mini warehouses or self-storage, that's going to tend to be income.
And, and again, you look, you look at each one of those cases and you make a decision. I'm sure, I'm sure that's probably something that can be debated between the appraiser and the, any appeal that was made by the property.
Absolutely.
Okay. I actually have a, a couple of slides I'd like to show, but I don't want to take too much of your time, Mr. Chairman. I would love to just share a little bit of additional data and invite you, Mr. Appraiser, to please comment as well. Nicole, would you be, put up my slide deck, please? Just to be clear, I, I used the first slide here as something I showed the legislature. I testified last week on HCR 5011. And I'm going to tell you, this particular slide, I showed this before I had the new data. And I want to thank the appraiser. I did ask them to provide updated data, which I did get, I think, yesterday. And I wanted to say, I did update this chart. But let me just show you, this is what I showed the legislature last week in, in House Tax. I think there's 21 members on that committee. And this slide created a bit of, a bit of a discussion. What this shows is the 2024 appraised value. This is a 12-month period from October to September last year, going back to, again, October '23 through September last year, I think September 1. And so on the, on the X-axis, that horizontal axis, you see the appraised value from the county appraiser. And then you see the actual sales price of those properties. This is every single property, every residential property that sold in that 12-month period. And you'll notice that that green line, the one that goes from corner to corner, is a, is a, is a one-to-one ratio. In other words, if it sold for the exactly the same value as the appraiser said it was worth, it'd be exactly on that green line. But what you see there, that blue line, is an average of all those red dots. So any property that's below the green line actually is, in a sense, it sold for less than what the appraiser said it was worth. And so if you had a property, I highlighted the one in the middle. It says, how they won those red dots. It said it sold for $400,000, but it was appraised by the county appraiser at $496,900. So there was an error. Now, maybe they, maybe they knew the buyer and it was a relative and for some reason they sold it for less than maybe fair market value. But we assume this is a fair market value. And for some reason, that one was about 20% higher than it should, it sold for 20% less than what it was appraised at. So we don't know the details of that. But there's a story there. And if you look at every one of those red dots below that green line, I'm sure every one of those red dots below the green line has a story. The ones above the green line, actually, these are pretty happy people. Because happy people, my example of that, above the green line, you'll see that one that says, it was appraised by the county appraiser at half a million dollars. It sold, it sold, excuse me, counting the other way around. The appraiser said it was worth $363,400 and sold for half a million. So that person is pretty happy. Because what that means is, they've been underpaying their taxes for years. And yet it was worth more than, than it sold, I'm sorry, it sold for more than what the county appraiser said it was worth. So every one of those red dots above that green line are, are basically happy people, okay? So of the 4,182 homes that sold in that 12-month period, 3,660 of those sold above the appraised value. And we have the other side of the equation. We have 522, 522 sales, this is the orange box there, sold for, sold below the appraised value. They should be a little bit less happy. I'm sure they're not happy at all because they thought their house, they were paying taxes for a house that had a higher value to the county than what it was able to be sold, sold for on the, on the fair market, on the, the real estate market, fair market value. So there is an equation there and the equation has a y equals mx plus b. And if you look at that, basically, you add about 6.8% and add $21,000, you're going to be on that blue line on average. Now, I bring this up because those red dots represent individual home sales. If you just take one of those red dots below the line, you, you might get the idea that, wait a minute, everyone, everyone's overpaying their taxes. And the reality is, there's an awful lot more. In fact, there's seven, seven dots above that green line for every one dot below the green line. It's, it's a one-eighth of the homes are overvalued that sold on the free market and seven of them are undervalued by the appraiser and sold for more of that, more than the appraised value above that green line. So it's a, it's a one to seven ratio, if you want to think, or one-eighth of the properties is on one side and seven-eighths of properties on the other side. I bring all that up because I wanted to show you, there's, there is a lot of, again, the, the reason there's a scatter on this graph here, that represents the, the variability or the error band, if you will, of the appraiser. Yeah, they're trying to do their very best they can. In fact, I would like to articulate a goal for you, Mr. Appraiser. You can agree with me or not, but I think your, your goal is to be accurate.
That is correct.
And you're not trying to, you're not trying to be above or below fair market value. Actually, you said 95%. You're trying to be 95%. That's your goal.
Right.
But, but you're trying to be consistent. Every home, you want to be at 95% value. And that's what you're trying to do. And the county, the Kansas Constitution says that you want to be uniform and equal. And if you hit every house exactly 95%, it would be uniform and equal. The problem is, some of them are undervalued and some of them are overvalued. And so every one of those are undervalued by the appraiser and someone realizes, the unrealized gain, as the previous commissioner was speaking about unrealized gain, when they sold their property for more than the appraiser said it was worth, they're pretty happy. And so the idea is that the, the, the width of that red band is, in my opinion, is really the, the takeaway here. The width of the red band is the problem. Let me say that again. So the variation of the appraiser being off on individual sales is, is ideally not as wide as we show on this chart here. Now, I don't think you've done anything intentional. This is just the way the reality shows up when you look at actual home sales. Go to the next slide, please. This shows every single, I got this data yesterday, so please allow me the privilege to update my chart. If I've made an error, I'm going to go back and check every number on there. But I believe that I'm correct based on my timing with the new data. But that shows every single appraised value from 24 to 25, residential. There's 172,000 dots on that red chart, those red dots, 172,000 of those red dots on there. And you'll notice, it's kind of hard to see there, but there, there's a blue dot in the upper right-hand corner. That's on a green line. That green line goes to the other corner. So it goes to 00 and then a million, a million, a million-dollar home is on the far right and, and the top band there. That line, I decided to keep this to a million dollars for most properties. There are some above that number. I didn't want to show them on the graph because it, it skews the ability to see what's on the, on the chart there. But what I'm saying is, the red dots you can see are generally above that green line. Majority of those dots are above the green line. That, what that means is, from 2024 to 2025, the vast majority of those red dots had a correction that went into the positive. We saw that because you showed us that. 87% had a 9% increase. And you can see that in this data as well. And so, again, there's going to be a story. There's someone, I'm going to show you and make a point here. If you look at, there, there's a red dot over on the right-hand side. Someone went from $650,400. I take that back. They were, I'm sorry, they were at $650,000 in 2024 and they, they dropped to $495 in 2020. By the way, around. Hang on, I got that. Let me go back where I was. Excuse me. Okay. Excuse me. Back on my, on that slide right there. There's a house there that, that was $502,000 in 2024 and it dropped to $287,690 in 2025. And why did it drop? I have no idea. It's a huge change. It dropped in value from 24 to 25. Every one of those dots on that side of that line are going to have a similar story. Now, we don't know the story behind exactly why that, why that change was made. But look at the guys on the other side of that, on top of the chart. There's one there that was appraised at $417,200 and in 2025, it shot up to $794,100. Working, I don't know which district that's in, but someone's going to get an email on that one. Okay? That's a 90% increase. Now, it could be that their house actually increased in value. Maybe it was under construction and it, and it finished its construction during that year. Or maybe there's a city park going in next door and they, you know, people, or there's a new school down the street. We don't know. What, maybe, maybe this one actually added on to the home. We don't know what the reason, we don't know what's the story behind that particular one. But there's a lot of red dots. If you can zoom in on, you can't, I don't want to ask you to zoom in, but if you could zoom in, you'd see there's a lot, a lot of red dots that are up there above that center line. And every one of those is potentially an email to a commissioner. And my question is, we can't create policy based on those red dots far from that middle line because there, there's going to be a story there. Someone I talked to the other day, the other day, said their house went up in value 22% last year and they were very upset. And I empathize with them. And I went and looked at their property and I discovered that their property probably had been undervalued for years. And I think what we're seeing here is a correction in their particular value. They may not want to hear that, but I think their property is actually worth by, and that particular property is worth about $100,000 more than they think it particular property is worth about $100,000 more than they think it's worth. And I based that on a lot of other data. So I think in that particular property, it's still undervalued by the appraiser. But that person's mad because they realized a 22% change in one year, and they're upset. Again, if I remove myself from that conversation and simply say, one of the goals of the appraiser is to help us apportion the tax burden to every property tax owner. We set the burden of tax by when we pass a budget, and you divide up that burden of tax based on every single person's assessed value. They own property, they have an assessed value, they get a share of that tax burden. When one person's apportionment goes up and somebody else's apportionment goes down, that tax burden shifts from one taxpayer to the other. Essentially, that's what's happening here. So the question, and I'll say also, the appraiser's job is not to create tax dollars. They should be disconnected from that entire idea. I think if you ask the appraisers about creating more tax dollars, that's not in their mind at all. They're just trying to be as accurate as possible. But when you hear about that person has a 22% increase in one year, or this person on that chart has a 90% increase in one year, it creates a discussion that says, is the policy need to change? Is the appraiser that bad that we need to do something about the process here? Please go to the next slide. Interestingly enough, if you look at the same houses that sold, and they sell their property, the property that sales report goes to the appraiser, and you'll notice there is a, the last two, this one and the one before that, this is much more close to that green line. There's less of them above than there was on the previous slide. I highlighted the exact same two properties. So what you saw before, the house, again, below the line, it was at $502,000, and they delivered it at $287,690, that same house. Take that back and go back, excuse me, get this right here. Oh, this is 2024, excuse me. This is, I take that back, I messed up on my comment here. This is every house that's sold in 2024, like the very first slide I showed you, but this is a calendar year, okay? Notice how the red dots are generally above that middle, that 45%, let's just say that one-to-one line. And again, I highlight two properties, one below the line, one above the line. So the guy below that line, he's appraised at $650,400, and he sold for $495. One above that line, he was appraised at $222,500, and he sold at $615. So you have a happy taxpayer and a very upset taxpayer. Please go to the next slide. That's the exact same data, but this was 2025 appraised values. Notice how they've gotten really tight? Because when you sell a property, a copy that sales report goes to the appraiser, and they use that as a comparison, and they update their data to basically match fair market value. They don't just take it for what it says and just move your number to that exact number. They use other data as well. But notice how much tighter that is. This is the exact same data. The same two houses on this one have their new updated numbers. So what was $650,400 and sold at $495, and again, it shows that they updated the value of $519,800, sold at $495. Take that back, the appraiser said it was $519,800, sold at $495. So that property is much closer to the fair market value. It's still overvalued a little bit. But notice it went from $650,400 down to $519,800. That had a huge reduction in the appraised value that the county appraiser is using. Why did it go down? Because they provided fair market value sale price to the appraiser. On the other side of that line, the guy that was valued at $222 and sold at $615, that house went up to $506,000. Now, that guy's probably going to call somebody and say, hold on here, my property went up in value from $222,500 to $506,800. $506,800, that's a huge, that's like 300% increase. And he's going to get mad. Bear in mind, he just bought the property for $100,000 above that. So, should we change the process? Is my question. When you hear from these people above, when you hear these people from below the line, there is truly a challenge, there's a problem below that line. We need to address that. I don't want anybody to be valued on paper above a fair market value, and I don't think the appraiser wants that either. And I didn't put this on this chart, but to the legislature, I did point out, you know, if you were trying to shoot a target with a gun, one way to get better and get closer to the middle of that target is to improve your processes, to improve your equipment, improve your breathing, improve your ammunition, practice a lot more, get a better rifle. You know, there's all kinds of things you can do to do better at target practice. When we see that really wide band of errors, I think the challenge for us is to find a way to reduce the errors, and that should be our goal. I don't think the actual process, when you look at this holistically, we're pretty close to being where we need to be. But those dots that are far from that center line, they're the ones that we're going to hear from. And there is a problem for those specific properties. But I don't think the problem overall is the entire, the entire process is not broken, is what I'm trying to tell you. So the legislature is looking at two solutions. One of them is both constitutional amendments. If you go to the next slide. I took it upon myself to find a way to take all of the data from 2015 through 2025 for residential. That red line is a composite change. I took the decreases plus the increases, and I divided it up by 100. And you can see that overall, there is a steep increase in property values on that chart. The house version, HCR 5011, which I testified on that, would smooth that out. That green line shows a six-year averaging of that data. So you take those peaks and valleys out. I would tell you that I think the problem is with this idea is it delays corrections. If someone has a correction applied to their property, it delays the impact of that correction for as many years as it's averaged out. So say it's a six-year average, they may not realize the full effect of that correction for six full years. And they may get the benefit of paying less taxes. That is true. But that just means you take that tax burden that we pass in our budget, you divide that up by everybody else, everybody else that has a slight increase in their tax burden. Because when someone pays a little bit less than their fair share, someone else is paying a little bit more than their fair share. So if you really want to articulate the goals, my goal for the appraiser is to be absolutely perfectly accurate and consistent, and have those changes dynamically impacted, dynamically, excuse me, dynamically captured in our appraisal data that we provide to our taxpayers. Because only then do we have a truly fair system. And I don't know if I like property taxes. I start out my testimony to the state, and I don't like property taxes. Nobody really does. I wish we had a different source of revenue. The idea of property taxes is created in our Kansas Constitution. It was, there is essentially, it's a wealth tax. If you live in a million-dollar home versus a mobile home, you will pay a share of your wealth, your demonstrated wealth and how you choose to live, you're going to pay a share of that to do the general fund of the government. That's everything from roads and bridges, public safety, human services, and the cost of running government in the first place, all of our overhead and things like, you know, human resources and finance and purchasing, those are all part of general government. So you pay a share of your demonstrated wealth to fund government based on how you choose to live. You choose to live in a million-dollar home or a mobile home, you're going to pay a share of your demonstrated wealth to fund government. And I understand the idea of unrealized gains. I think that's truly an issue. A lot of folks are getting taxed out of their homes. I think our real answer needs to be this, and y'all may not like when I say this, but we spend too much money. And we need to get back to the idea of, in my personal opinion, a tax lid-like law that gives us some caution on how fast we grow our government. The problem, I don't think, is the appraisal process. I think the problem with the appraiser's office is not so much that he's done something intentional to be wrong. I think his goal is pure. He's trying to do the very best he can to be as accurate and consistent as he can be. The problem is, if you look at that bullseye, that target again, we're all over the target. Now, why is that? Because our processes aren't as improved as they could be. If we had a perfect system, we got every error out of that system as possible, I think you're still going to find some of the errors that are going to cause the conversation to continue. The errors are part of the problem. But if you did everything you could to get all the errors out, then you're still going to have eventually a subjective system with some errors still built in. I don't know if there's any way to get rid of all the errors. I don't like the error band that we have right now. I think the only way to really make that more narrow is to invest in the appraiser's office. By that, I mean better tools, more training, better computer modeling, more data, maybe there's other ideas of using, you talk about fee appraisals to help drive part of the system here. But at the end of the day, I don't think the appraisal system is the actual problem. People are paying a lot of taxes today. What this reflects on this chart here is the economy. We see supply chains, we see energy costs, labor costs, commodities. I'll use the word Biden economy. That has caused aggressive inflation in everything we touch, and it's impacted the housing market as well. And it also impacts our budget. Everything we do in the Central County, our price for sheriff's vehicles, price of ambulances, price of gasoline and food for our inmates and everything else, price of labor, has gone up, just like housing's gone up. So at the end of the day, I don't think the problem is the appraiser process. The problem, I think, is the economy itself is to blame. And second of all, if you really want to solve the issues of errors in the appraisal process, we need to invest in better tools for the appraiser and invest in getting that error band much more narrow. But even in doing that, you're never going to solve every problem on every individual house. But if you look at this holistically, as all of the data from a perspective of the taxing jurisdiction, I don't think there's that much problem in what we have been presented today. I think we can make it better, but I don't think HCR 5011 is going to solve the problem at the end of the day. And I really don't think SCR 1603 is going to solve the problem.
I agree with that.
Because actually, what they're going to do in both those cases, they're going to keep track of a fair market value appraisal, and they're going to add, if you will, a capped appraisal or averaged appraisal on the side, so they have two appraisals now for every property. And they're going to diverge over time. As they diverge, what we're doing is you're shifting that burden from those people who benefit from those math schemes, and you're shifting that burden to everybody else, especially commercial and ag. I contacted Kansas Farm Bureau. I said, are you guys aware of this? And I hate to say this, but they weren't fully aware of the math, what's going to cause them to take a larger share of the burden. When you're shifting tax burden from one class to another, it's exactly what that's going to do. For any property who's not seeing appreciation like some of these other properties, they're not going to continue paying, if you possibly, their share and a little bit of share for someone else who gets the benefit of paying less than their fair share. So at the end of the day, we've got to get a handle on our spending. That's the only real answer. And I would love to talk about what that would look like at our financial retreat come up. Mr. Appraiser, I've said a lot. Would you like to comment on my slides?
Well, I think you did a good job with your slides, and I do appreciate your work on this. And the Director of PVD did see your testimony, and he thought you did a good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, thanks for the chance to speak. I'll stand for questions if anybody wants to make comments back to me as well.
Certainly. Okay. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And Commissioner Howell, thank you very much for putting these documents together. I did kind of want to talk about some of the things, you know, you see that 14% of the people are paying more in taxes than what their assessed value was. That's 585 people. And you know, I think you guys are doing a great job. You're not going to hit everybody. But if you're one of those 585 people, you want to ensure that we have a good process for reviewing the assessment, and we have a good process for BOTA. And I guess my concerns get back to the real estate world. What's it take me to get that property ready to get on the market? You know, I'm going to have to do repairs, I'm going to have to pass inspection, I'm going to have closing costs, maybe have discount points, you're going to have a commission out there. Those are, could easily be 10% to 14% as well. So got 14% of the people paying more than what they have, then if we've got a 10% to 14% cushion, I guess I'm concerned with, years ago, back when I used to buy investment property, we used to always say, if we could buy them for tax value, that's a great deal, you know? I don't think anybody's saying that today.
Right. I don't think anybody's saying that.
Do we look for that cushion of all of what it takes to get a property? But, you know, I'm guessing 10% to 14%. We know it's, an average commission is around six. We know it's going to at least be, you know, 10. Do we figure any math into that, what it takes to get that property across the gate to close it?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. As Commissioner Howell said, there are some things that I think the system as a whole could be improved in some ways.
Mark, thanks again. Appreciate your work. I'll just say that valuation increases do not automatically mean you're going to have property tax increases. As these valuations go up in March, people are going to immediately assume that because the budget process with your local jurisdictions are what determines that. So to Commissioner Howell's point, we've got work to do in Central County to do the best we can for our constituents to make sure that we are trying to do the very best of keeping lean, efficient government and growth of any property taxes under control. So I appreciate your work. Job's now ours. So with that being said, oh, go ahead, Mark, you got it.
By all means, if there are any other questions, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I will make a motion to receive and file the appraiser's report.
A second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item M, Report of the Board of Bits and Contracts, Regular Meeting on February 13, 2025.
The ever-so-patient Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's good to see you. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bits and Contracts, Regular Meeting of February 13 results in three items that we're seeking your approval for. Our first item is the 2025 Crack Seal, Project R175H for Public Works. His recommendation is to accept a low-qualified bid from Conspec Incorporated. They're doing business as Kansas Paving, and the amount of $628,082.32. Our second item are two of the one-ton, four-wheel-drive crew cab, flat-bed, fuel-and-loop trucks, which are for fleet management at Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low-bid meeting specifications from Master Tech Truck and Equipment LLC, and that's in the amount of $228,504. Our third and final item is the Walmart Business Retail Wholesale Merchandise Solutions and Services for various departments, and we're recommending to establish a contract with Walmart Business utilizing the Omnia Partners Contract, NCPA Number 15-02, with the Region 14 Educational Service Center of Texas. This contract's good through August 31 of 2026, and it has two additional one-year options to renew. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Three items on the bid board today. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Joe?
One question.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Just curious, it says here, PPJ is a non-KDOT pre-qualified contractor. Please explain that a little bit more.
Hi, Mr. Lynn Packer. He'll give you a little more better details than I could.
County Engineer, Public Works Director, Lynn Packer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, all of our highway contractors are required to be KDOT pre-qualified. PPJ understands that. We notified them when they pulled plans.
Okay. They did have a lower bid. Is that something that, I mean, you said they were aware of that, so they were disqualified because they were not on this list, apparently?
Correct. They don't meet the financial and/or work requirements for the work.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering about, we're not allowed to hire them if they're not approved by KDOT then? Okay. It's news to me. I just didn't know how that worked, but I hope that they'll continue to try to get qualified because it looks like they're very competitive, so.
Yes, we've used them on non-highway work. But I, we've talked to them for years about getting pre-qualified, and they have not done it.
Well, this is, this is a certain type of road that KDOT has, KDOT has the...
KDOT, in this particular case, KDOT does not have any funding in this project. That is our standard for all of our work, to set, we use their basis as our basis for prequalification of the work that needs to be done.
I just see that the, the bid board is pretty split on this one as well. Is this, is this the reason why, that they were split, you know?
I don't know that, that even being split.
Okay.
The reason that Anna Meyerhoff Cole abstained is because she arrived late, I believe. And so, she didn't hear the full mouth, otherwise it would have been...
Never mind. I misinterpreted what four to five meant.
Yes.
I thought it was a four against five, but no, it's four in favor and one not voting. All right. Thank you so much for the answers. Appreciate you guys.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for February 13th, 2025. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Boobah.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Tim Kaufman, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, County Manager's Office. I recommend approval of items N through T.
Okay, Commissioners, we've been briefed and had discussions about the consent agenda. Any questions or comments for Tim? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, items N through T. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Boobah.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Ms. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So, we are on the 38th day of the legislative session, and turnaround day is tomorrow. And so, at that point, non-exempt bills need to be passed in their chamber, of their original chamber. So, the chamber is on the floor all this week, and there will be no session Friday through Monday. And so, we have seen that the drafts of the sale bill, or excuse me, the sales tax distribution formula has been introduced, as well of, I've stated that the Regional Forensic Science Center, the bill that we sent to Jason and Jessica on the cremated remains of unclaimed individuals, as I mentioned last week, that has a bill number, that's House Bill 2331. There is a hearing next week on that, Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. in federal and state affairs. Dr. Stedman is submitting testimony, and so, at this point, I wanted to ask if the Commissioners would be interested in providing testimony as well, since that is on our legislative platform. Jason did mention also that the elections bill that we sent up to them, we did see a draft form of that, that has also been introduced. So, we are hoping to see a bill number on that shortly, and that was introduced on the Senate side. What he did share with us, we sent a fourth bill, and that was on corrections, that was to amend Senate Bill 228 to add juvenile detention facilities. He did indicate that we will likely not see that one worked this legislative session. So, just an update on that. House Bill 119, that is our treasurer's bill, that's been moved out of transportation and is now with Senate Ways and Means, so that bill has been blessed. So, we'll continue to watch that one. Again, that's increasing the amount of fees retained by the county treasurer, and so, that does help Sedgwick County fiscally, as that will help us, as we will no longer, if that passes, we will no longer need to subsidize that with general fund dollars. I did have property tax bills to honor my update, as far as what's happening with the Senate and House, but Commissioner Howell spoke to that quite, quite a bit, as he did testify last week. The budget, House Bill 2007, you did see probably in Jason and Jessica's newsletter that the House took up the budget first. He did mention that there were some cuts in that bill, none that seemed to affect Sedgwick County, and then that will go over to the Senate side, and he didn't indicate that the Senate will likely make more cuts to the budget as well. So, we'll keep an eye on that. One thing that did come up yesterday is House Bill 2088. That is a bill that was amended by the House Committee. It enacts fast-track permitting, requiring local governments to meet specified deadlines for issuing building permits. And as Scott Whittle indicated, there's also a 60-day clock that would apply to zoning cases. So, as that originally came through, that was opposed by the League of Municipalities, and many cities also weighed in as opponents on that. So, I've reached out to Jason and Jessica, just to get with them, to see how they're weighing in on that, and if they could give us some insight on that. So, I'll keep you updated on that. And then, just one thing I wanted to mention, there is a substitute for Senate Bill 29. Just for your awareness, this is a revised bill that prohibits counties, joint health boards, and local health officers from banning public gatherings to control infectious diseases, allowing only recommendations against such gatherings. And then, I just will, as I always do, kind of turn it over to Commissioner Howell. I know that he testified on Monday on House Bill 2329, as did our Corrections Director, Steve Stonehouse, so I'll just turn it over to him, to see if he wants to mention anything on that piece.
Thank you, Tanya, and thank you, Chairman. Actually, there was a bill also, HB 2325, that was on Friday. In fact, the plan was to do both that one and 2329 on Friday, but they ran out of time, so I went back on Monday to testify on 2329. But we did have staff, Sheriff Easter and Mark Bennett, and some of their support people, as well as, I think, Corrections testified on 2325. That deals with this issue of having juveniles having possession of a firearm, consequences that stem from the possession of a firearm by a juvenile. So, right now, unless they actually commit a violent act with that firearm, there is essentially nothing that happens. So, this would change that standard for that situation. County did testify in favor. I didn't testify on that bill, but I was there, and I think that County did a great job. And then, 2329 deals with the issue of group homes for juvenile offenders, and I did testify on that on behalf of the county. I would tell you that there is some, there is some significant opposition from essentially Department of Corrections, which surprises me, actually, Kansas Department of Corrections, KDOC. I don't, I'm trying to understand exactly why they're opposed, except for, this does require them to do quite a bit of work. So, I think that's really the nature of their, of their opposition, is it puts the work on, onto them to do something. They, their testimony, in my opinion, was, was obviously flawed. They would rather basically continue to use foster care and DCF to deal with these kids, and I think that that testimony did not do them any favors. So, I believe that the Committee is very motivated, as the Chair is very motivated. This is not an exempt committee, but I do know that there is an intent to refer this, I think, to Fed and State this week, and get it back to the Committee. They'll be, I expect by the end of this week, possibly, well, probably, so, end of next week, I should say, I believe this will pass out of Committee. And so, the question is to get this above the line in, on general orders. I do believe both these bills will be passed out of Committee. They are going to make some effort to soften some of the concerns of the opponents, but I think both bills have viability. And our lobbyist, Jessica Lucas, was there for both hearings, and she also agrees, I think, that these bills are going to move forward. So, overall, great experience. I was there Thursday, Friday, and Monday, two different trips to Topeka. Overall, I think on 5011, had I not spoken on that bill, I think that that bill would have passed out, but right now, I don't know that it's going to. I think that they realize that that bill is flawed, as it's currently written. So, I think 5011 is going to stall, and the House has no interest in 1603. SCR 1603, I think, is dead on arrival in the House. So, the Committee Chairman on Tax, actually, is a former, former, excuse me, not Central County, former county commissioner. And I think he understands exactly the points I was making. I think he was very, very supportive. So, I think we're going to see some other bill come forward, still, although he's, tax, by the way, is an exempt committee. I believe they're going to be introducing a different bill here pretty quickly to catch up with the other two bills. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Tanya, I don't know if you said anything about the special elections bill. It was, Senate Bill 2723 was introduced just yesterday, late, in the Federal and State Affairs Committee. So, that was something we talked about a lot, quite a bit with our Election Commissioner, Lori Rainwater, on trying to put some more guidelines into special elections and dates. And Senate Bill 2723 was introduced yesterday. Also, you had mentioned a letter of support for the cremations.
Yes.
So, I would certainly be in favor of that. Anybody else thoughts on that? I think that we do, this is on our legislative platform, we do know this impossible problem that we're dealing with at the Regional Forensic Science Center, so I think this would be something we should certainly put a letter of support together. So, it looks like you have unanimous consent.
Great.
We'll do that, and we can maybe knock that out. I know we have a staff meeting tomorrow morning, so maybe if we can get a, I don't know if it's too soon to get a draft on that or not, but we have great lawyers. Look, isn't that great?
I think we can probably accomplish that, and then we can discuss that tomorrow.
Okay. Great. Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Howell?
Just one more question. On HB 2088, the fast-track building permit law, I've read, I've read the bill. I think that there has been, maybe some change happened at some point in the drafting process of this. I'm not so sure that includes a zoning deadline still. I think the building permit thing is still in there, but is the...
That was Scott's interpretation of that. Although it is broad, he is, he is seeing some zoning, that there is some zoning deadline in there.
I think the zoning piece of this is more complicated. So, if that's still in there, then I would, I think, be opposed to that, it's probably fine. But in terms of building permits themselves, I think if we can streamline that process to expedite people getting permits through the, you know, through our regulatory process, I'm okay with the idea, the principle of that. I just don't know that I would support the ever zoning, because there's a lot of due process on both sides of those issues, and I think we need to allow the process to have everybody have some due process opportunity to make their, make their case. So, all right. Thanks.
Okay. Tanya, anything else?
I think that's it for...
Great job.
Okay.
I know this is a busy, busy season for you, so we're grateful.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to legal, to some of the work you guys are doing for us. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay. Commissioners, any committee...
Other?
Anything? Commissioner Howell?
Just wanted to tell the world, I guess I have a Citizens Town Hall. I know the weather's been, not been great, it's cold, but the roads are certainly passable, and I think that I'm not going to cancel my, my plan to have a Citizens Town Hall this evening at the Derby City Library. They have a large meeting room, meeting room there. I have our, some of our staff that's going to be there to help me get that done today. So, it's going to start at, doors open, I think, around 6:00 o'clock. The event starts at 6:30 and will end at 8:00 o'clock, if not before. If there's less interest in this for some reason, we'll end it when people are making comments. But 6:30 to 8:00 this evening at Derby Public Library. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Anything else under other? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Okay. We do have an executive session today. Commissioner Meitzner?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 12:20, for the consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to discuss legal claims against Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioner return to this room from executive session at 12:20.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Boobah.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We'll take a break. We'll be back at 12:20.[1369.95]